Thank you. Okay, so Josh is gonna be down in his room. He will be here. Before I forget, very important, I think we need to order more pooper scooper bags for the dog poop stations. I just keep forgetting. We have them, we just need to refill them.
Oh, yeah, I mean.
They're empty.
I look at the, in the, what you call it, the closet there, there's like a bunch of them up there.
Okay, so then.
We just need to ask John or Laura to replace them, right?
Yeah. You have asked, okay. Alright, meeting is being recorded a couple times, it's open at 6 o'clock. Um, so we have an examination of the previous meeting minutes. Oops, I was, wait, I wasn't absent, was I?
Yes.
No, this was from, this was just from the ones before that.
The one before the time?
Yeah, before the time, before the time. I'll second that, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, meeting minutes are accepted as written. Um, we're gonna move on to the contract. So, I'm gonna make a motion and then we can talk about it.
Okay.
So, a motion to approve the contract between the town and Carpet Warehouse for removing, disposing, and replacing the carpet at the fire office of Old Town Hall, did we not already do this?
Yes, you voted in support of the quote, now it's just the actual contract between the town. There's in front of you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
You're welcome.
Same thing, I think we had to have a standard contract in place that we could sign, we had a quote.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Okay, so the total cost is the 2,360, oh no, I'm sorry, that's wrong. The total cost is the 6,910. Is that right, Josh?
Yes, with 88 cents.
Six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty-eight cents, alright. Um, and the contract has been reviewed by town council?
Yeah, they approved the form.
Okay, so they remove it, they get rid of it, they furnish and install the new one. Is there a warranty or anything on the carpet, do we know?
Chief Modder is on the line, do you know whether or not there's a warranty?
I don't, excuse me, I don't remember if it was done there, but when I talk to them tomorrow, I will.
Okay, just curious, not a big deal.
I would take one step further on that, if we know, if it comes to light that there is some kind of a one-year warranty, two-year, three-year, 10-year, 25-year, I don't care if it's installed by them, that we somehow annotate that on the contract document, whether it's a handwritten note, whatever, or attached to the install receipt, something so that we don't have to find Chief Modder four years from now after he's retired and say, "You remember when you installed carpet?"
I'll be available, don't worry.
Very. Any questions on that before we?
He's right here.
Do you guys have any questions on the contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations on your new carpet.
Make sure that you sign one of them and just pass it to Joanne.
Oh, sign one of them, yep, you have the contract here? Oh, hold on, Joanne's telling me, I'm not, I wasn't listening, it's right here. Teachers make the worst students. You gotta sign that one too, okay. It is six thousand nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty-eight cents. Um, next up, I have, we are reviewing a contract between the town and VHB, which is a company that is looking to do some peer review services for the planning, I can't speak, the planning board, to review plans and reports for the proposed adult-use marijuana cultivation and marijuana product manufacturing establishment proposed on Otis Stage Road by Bell Floor Holdings. So, um, this one is in the amount of five thousand one hundred dollars.
And Kara, just so you're aware, that five thousand one hundred, the planning board maintains a line item, funds that were provided to us by the vendor to hire outside consultants to help with these peer review views. So, it's not, essentially, it's not costing the town anything.
So, it's paid for by the, by Bell Floor?
Right, it's funds that we hold, that's in our control.
So, where fields operate, we get the cash in, we pay Pioneer Planning, Valley Planning to do that third-party review.
Um, has this contract also been reviewed by town council?
Yes, the only, so, similar to that conversation we had about Carpet Warehouse last select board meeting, VHB has their own conditions, terms and conditions, which town council came back and said that, you know, it's inappropriate that we have our own town contract. Uh, I did speak with a representative from VHB earlier today, who's gonna go back and just, I guess, confirm on their end that they're okay with us removing.
Okay.
That piece, you'll notice at the very last page, I just crossed out "subject to terms and conditions", and I wrote underneath it "C-Town contract", so hopefully that doesn't come up with, there isn't any conflict there. But if you can just initial that cross-out, Kara, too, where it says "C-Town contract".
Got it, okay.
Just populate your information there where it says, you know, your name, title, date, and as well as, you know, sign the original contract as well.
Which I'm sure I have in my pile, if I was paying attention.
Yeah, it says, uh, it's VHB spelled out, Vanessa Hagan, Brooksland Incorporated. Looks like it.
Hold on, let me look, no, I really don't, but I can sign this one. Hey, guys, okay, um, so is there a motion on the table?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. You need more words from us?
Nope.
Okay. Alright. I have a pile right here for you. Today is the 11th. Okay, right there, alright, uh, next up, we have review and take action, I thought we did this last week, or is this because it's a contract? No.
It's because that's the official contract and they require one with a signature from the board.
Got it, okay. So, that one, I think I have right here, no, is this it?
And that's the two-year.
Oh, yeah, this is the one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars? Okay, so, um, motion to, to approve the purchase order for Hewlett-Packard Maintenance Contract of the Maine Laser Jet Copier in the amount of one thousand one hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Yep, second.
Okay, so we did talk about this last week and we asked Joanne to go forward with the, this one.
Go big or go home.
Alright. Um, any discussion? On favor? Alright, get us moving right along. Um, okay, so next up, I have, this one always confuses me, Josh, I remember receiving this a few years ago. So, we have to vote to receive this, it's a notification from a record, a recorded notice of activity and use limitation and permanent solution with condition statement, there's a lot of words, from DOT regarding the Mass Turnpike Maintenance Facility, can anyone explain this to me a little bit clearer?
What? I think this is a mitigation of a hazardous spill and it should go to the police chief.
Um, Chief Modder, does that sound like something that you should get?
Normally, when I saw those in the past, it was either a gas station removing tanks and they had a leak and they're, they needed to remediate it, or it was so bad that the licensed site professional, who was an environmental engineer, excuse me, deemed that the land couldn't be used for anything, but I have no, I can't find any records for anything up there, so I have no idea what this is for.
I think this is up at the maintenance facility, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't really understand what it's about, to be honest with you.
By law, they're supposed to report any hazardous spill.
Yeah.
So, they're going at it wrong, they're supposed to report it to the chief, and then if he wants to pursue it, he can bring it up here. I think that's the way it used to go, that's the way it did when, when I was doing it, I talked with the chiefs today and we agreed that, yeah, it's, it was.
Well, I guess. Whereas the portion of the property comprises part of a disposal site.
That's where I'm quite confused.
As a result of release of oil or hazardous chemical. So, they parked a vehicle and it had a hole and it leaked out 20 gallons of oil into the ground, they're saying
Okay.
they're not going to recondition the ground, they're gonna send a notice that says, "It's contaminated, let's move on."
From the looks of this map.
And maybe bigger than that.
From the looks of this map, it came from the pump island, because they've got a pretty big circle here.
Oh, from their fuel pump island.
Should this also go to conservation, I mean, there's a wetland there.
Well, my concern is, if we recall, that, my gosh, when we wanted to pour just a little bit of concrete in front of the, in front of our, in front of our garage, we had to rip it down and go down 20, 40 feet and completely clean it up.
Yes, that's right.
That's why I think this should go to our hazardous materials control officer, and he can work with the DEB on it.
I don't even understand where exactly which side of the road it's on.
Okay, it's Exhibit C.
Yeah. I'm seeing all these numbers.
Okay, well, here's the map right here.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't get there.
It shows the pump island.
Okay.
And current and former, which is a lot of the answer, diesel and gasoline units. So, that, that circle goes clear around
Yeah.
through this garage and down.
Into the ditch.
Wow, it actually is better, and then it goes through the big repair garage, so.
Hey, if you go to Exhibit C,
Yeah.
halfway down, it goes pretty much in detail on.
Yeah, I see that. I just wish that they could write one paragraph in normal English so that I could understand.
It exposes too much root.
It's really, none of it is written in language that.
When I make a motion, we turn it over to the hazardous materials control officer and let him report back when it's to his satisfaction.
Okay. I'll second that, any discussion?
The motion to send it to who or where?
Uh, be to fire chief.
Oh, just to the fire chief?
Yeah. I.e. hazard mitigation specialists, the second hat you wear.
We would need to confirm that the pump that was pumping the drainage actually discharges the waste into a septic system instead of into the swale of the property.
I don't see it going into a septic system, I see it going into the ground.
Goes into, yeah, went right into the ditch, it looks like, which is, it's all wetlands there, I mean, I don't think there's really much we can do about it, I mean, maybe we could try to follow up with.
Oh, they did remediation in 93.
Asking for cleanup, I don't know.
So, do you want, so just to be clear, you wanna vote to receive and forward communication to the fire chief?
Correct. Yeah, there's really not much we can do with it, we'll receive it and forward it to the fire chief for his notice.
Okay.
And then if there's anything else that.
Do you wanna report at all, or?
No, Chief Modder, if you feel like there's something you wanna get back to us on, um, I don't know, and I guess I would look to you for your opinion, if it's something we could forward it to conservation, I don't know if they're gonna be able to understand much of what it, what it, you know, maybe just for their information to have.
Yeah, well, according to this map, it doesn't go close to or through the leak field, so we're good.
How many pages is this bad boy? Eleven pages?
But, but as you read through this, they're talking about the, what they have to do to go down five feet, and then what they have to do to go down more than five feet, so that tells you that there's a lot of stuff in the ground up there.
Yeah.
And they, they wanna have a licensed site professional. That's what tipped me off that it was a hazardous spill.
Yeah. Okay, so Chief Modder, if you think there's anything you wanna get back to us on.
Okay, can you just leave that with Joanne, I'll pick it up tomorrow?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
And Chief, I'll help you all again with it.
Oh, also, Chief, before I forget, I have a Santa costume in the back of my car, I have to get back to you. And I have one for you. Can I leave it with Tom?
Yeah, I'll leave it with Tom.
Okay.
Unfortunately, tomorrow will probably be my last daytime shift in the office for 90 days, because on Wednesday I start grand jury duty.
Oh, fine.
Oh, look at you go.
Yeah.
Not a good time to be in a
Grand jury's in?
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like I don't wanna be in a public building. Yes, I am, okay, enough said, yes.
I have another action item that came forward today and didn't make it on time for posting of a meeting, I'm not sure if you wanna take it up under new business, or.
We can take it now.
So, in your package, you'll also see a resignation letter from Rainey Senical, effective June 30th, he's officially retiring.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure if you wanna address that letter and just vote to receive forward to the town clerk's office, or?
Yeah, so, um, so I'd vote to receive the resignation letter from Rainey Senical, dated January 11th, effective June 30th, '21. Unfortunately, don't really wanna vote to receive it, but is there a second, okay? Um, so, I, he says that he's enjoyed working for us, really appreciated the support and the cooperation, um, but he's looking forward to retirement, is that you with us, Rainey? On the phone?
He was with us and he's no longer with us, he might jump back on.
Okay.
Like, you know, when he does.
Um, so, I hate to see Rainey go, but I think he gave us more time than he originally said he was gonna give us, so I guess we have to be thankful for that. Um, this.
He said, what, two years, going on three?
Yeah, I know, we were just kinda holding our breath, really, don't mention it. So, I think that we've made some huge progress since Rainey's been here, specifically, you can look to that report that we received, where we got, what, an 85 on our road or something crazy like that? So, that's awesome. Um, and then he's offered to help us with the transition of a successor, so I guess we'll start that process similar to the process we've been doing for police. Josh, so you're a pro at this by now?
So, I, we can, so, what, yeah, what direction you wanna go? We can put together a review committee in, within town if you want, or I can just do this in which where we put together the job description and, and, and start soliciting resumes for the position and vet them and bring forward to you the top three of the finalists, but yeah, really, what, however direction you wanna, wanna see this managed.
If we did put together a committee, what would you, would you be looking for Chief Modder, Chief Ilniki?
Did we do that last time?
No, we didn't, it was solely myself in this office.
It was just, yeah, and I, I remember last time we, we struggled and Rainey sort of came in out of like a mist, he was like, "Tom, I'm here." Um.
Tony comes in every day.
Yeah. So, I don't know, does, do you think a review committee would be the way to go, Josh? Would that be more helpful for you?
And it doesn't hurt to, it's an advisory group of folks, maybe we can keep it at three, myself and two other folks. Um, it helps to brainstorm ideas and, and, and kinda help develop a strong and equitable and transparent process, especially when you're trying to narrow down candidates. We don't know how many we might get, and I guess the other part of this too is to set the salary range as well and, and that way we can start drafting that, that document with the, the appointed, you know, subcommittee here. With the specific direction of bringing forward just top three finalists, all for you guys to interview as final interviews.
I think that's been a successful process for us so far in the past. Question, TJ?
Yeah, doesn't Rainey have a suggestion? I, I remember in one of the meetings, he had made a recommendation on, on somebody to succeed him. I don't recall the name or anything.
I don't think he has a specific suggestion, I think that he, he's willing to help us in, I get, can Rainey be a part of that, or is that not okay?
He can be a part of it.
Is that, is that appropriate, I think he's willing to help us, you know, be a part of identifying, you know, qualifications for the job and who.
That's probably what he meant.
Yeah.
I mean, until June 30th, he's an employee and supervisor in the town, there's not a reason he can't participate in.
Yeah, because Chief Ilniki's, he's participating in.
Yeah.
Okay, so, yeah, that would be wonderful if he could help, I think he would be.
And that's what I'm thinking, Chief Ilniki, Chief Modder, the emergency management team, myself, you know, Rainey can help kinda provide guidance and the effort to strengthen what this job description would look like and, and put together a position profile along with, you know, pending projects that have been done and pending projects that are in the pipeline, some sort of summary that'll help, whoever's interested will read and say, "Wow, that sounds great, I'm applying." So, yeah.
Okay.
It's a good group.
That sounds good, then, let us know if there's anything else you need from us.
Will do.
Um, so I don't think we approved that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Tom, did you wanna vote on approving the letter for, from Rainey? All in favor of approving the letter?
Why should I?
Oh, you did, sorry, I didn't hear you. Um, okay, so I have that for, all for active, I don't have anything else for active, and then for unfinished, we start with a COVID-19 update, which we are not gonna have tonight. Um, so we'll table that till next week, or next two weeks. Uh, and then we have our draft warrant for the annual town, for special town meeting. So, some adjustments were made to articles one through six and then number 31.
We'd know, uh, four, five, and six, and 31.
Okay, that's what I was kinda wondering, I thought it might have to do with this. Um, actually, can we just? Okay, um, can we, before we do that, so that Nicole doesn't have to stay here all night, can we go to?
What? She's my neighbor, I gotta have some of your power.
Make sure he stays on the right side of the yellow line.
Uh, so it's not on the agenda, but I would make a motion to go to, under, under new business, it would be F, and it would be an update from the library regarding the library grant. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome, Nicole.
Thank you so much, Mary wants to introduce me.
Um, just on behalf of the trustees, we are ever so pleased to report that Nicole is, has put us in a position to receive a grant from the the ALA, American Library Association, which is a very big deal, and I will let her tell you about it, it's, it's really exciting.
Thank you.
And she's one of, our library is one of eight in the state to receive an award. And because Nicole has been involved as an outreach person for ALA and the small enrolled libraries, we have Otis, Chester, and Blanford in our area all receiving the grant.
That's amazing, wow.
Thank you, Mary. So, thank you so much for hearing, hearing us today. Um, we just received a $3,000 grant from the ARSL, which is the Association of Rural and Small Libraries and the American Library Association, and the purpose of the grant is to host one to two conversations in our community that would be about anything we wanted, and after talking to some community members, I realized that there was a lot of desire to tell people's stories in town of back in my day in Blanford, and these were stories that are, are out there, and a lot of people have been posting things, you know, on the library Facebook page about, "Oh, I remember in the library," and retelling these stories, so I thought it'd be a wonderful thing to be able to get around in Watson Park, sit down and have people talk about their memories in Blanford and record these, and then have that recording be part of, like, a library catalog of these experiences. Uh, so that's the first part of it, but then the actual funding that we're getting will be used to produce a story walk in Watson Park, it's a permanent story walk, uh, there's many of them around the entire country, and there're like little bulletin boards, and there'll be about 20 of them that will go around the park, and each one will have a sheet of plexi to allow us to put a different children's picture book along it so that people can walk along the parkway, or the, the walkway in the park and read the story with their family. The first and the last one will always have one of the stories of the Blanford residents, so there'll be a QR code that people can scan to bring up a digital recording of that, and then also some information about the person and their story on that board. So, my father volunteered to make these story walk boards, which is wonderful, and keeping us within our budget.
That's awesome.
I'm really excited.
I think it's such a great idea, it just gets people outside, it gets them walking, exercising, it's family time, you know, I think it's so cool, I can't wait to see it up and running, I know my kids are excited, so.
Thank you so much, and Kara, Ashley and Josh both had wonderful letters of recommendation that they submitted to have, to have this happen, letters of support, so, thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you, I, I think we had talked about doing one in the past, and then I don't know if it ever happened, or it was maybe it's just temporary.
It was going to be a temporary one for Halloween, but then
That's right.
Halloween didn't happen this year, nothing happened this year.
Nothing happened, yeah.
Something will be happening in 2021, though, this will, this will be slated to happen sometime in the summer.
Yeah.
Um, I do have until next February to spend the money on the materials for it, so if something happens with the planning of the park or anything like that, like, you still have the time to do it. Um, but the goal would be for it to happen in conjunction with the rest of Watson Park this summer.
So, the digital stories will be saved in, like, a website for, for the?
Yeah, so they'll be, they'll be uploaded onto the library server, and then they'll also be stored in the library as, like, just something that somebody could go and listen to on.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Have, have you talked to the Historical Society at all about this, I'm sure that they're interested in, yeah.
I think it was, um, tips that we had discussed this with the Historical Society, so, and there's actually a digital history project happening at Gateway as well.
Oh, cool.
So, this kind of dovetails with that.
Yeah, perfect, I was telling Nicole, it reminded me of StoryCorps, I don't know if you guys ever listen on NPR, they do StoryCorps, where they record the stories, the different conversations people have, and I think it's really neat.
I love StoryCorps.
Yeah.
Definitely was an inspiration, there's a lot of people in Blanford who have really fun memories of doing things, and it's not, it's not just the older generations, anybody can participate.
Yeah.
We all have experiences here, so.
I love it, it's a great idea. Yes, I have memories of Blanford, I'm sure. Awesome, thank you, we appreciate all the work, if there's anything else that you need from us to support it.
I think it's a great start from a, I'm gonna look at it from a theme perspective, right, because my, my interaction with this has been for conservation education on trail systems, right, so you can take a county park or a state park or a federal park, and it's still the same storyboard if I wanna teach kids about the life cycle of owls.
Exactly.
You know, there's the stories about, well, owls start as an egg, and then when their feathers pop and they go out, and so you can take that through seven or eight or 10 storyboards, so having it as a community leads to multiple projects that we could.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, and I, I should have mentioned that part of the funding will also include the ability for us to purchase the books, and then also to create take and make packets of crafts that kids can come and get at the library that connect to the story. So, it will bring kids into the library to continue that at home as well.
More importantly, it'll bring them in and then send them out to go find the story.
Yes, exactly, it's, it's a self-circling system, so it'll create more of a walking town for Blanford, which is, I think, something that everybody is kind of expressed in interest in.
Absolutely.
More of, so.
Do you guys have any idea as to when the library will be reopening for residents? Or I know that. Do you guys have any idea as to when the library will be reopening for residents? Or I know that that's my, I'm sorry if that's an annoying question.
No, it's not an annoying question. I mean, I would love to have it opened as soon as possible. It just comes down to, it's not even as much the patrons coming in now. As much as if we have patrons coming in, we need to have more than one staff member. I think it's a safety issue.
Yeah.
And to have two staff members working together in the smaller space for four plus hours.
Yeah.
Now is, it's a risk that I don't feel like I want to put any of our employees in.
Yeah.
We, we did have a concerning situation where somebody thought they may have had COVID and they didn't.
Yeah.
But it was an absolute, like.
Yeah.
Because up until that day, we had been working together.
Yeah.
She called me the next morning and said, I, I think I might have COVID, and I started feeling sick when I got home from work last night.
Yeah.
Full panic, in a sense that we didn't want anybody who was there to have to be.
Sure.
Getting that phone call from us.
I understand.
We're doing everything we can. We have an air purifier, and that makes us feel a lot safer about it, and it definitely moves that timeline up.
Yeah.
But it's still just the staff working together.
Yeah, and you, people can still borrow books.
Oh, yeah, we're still full service. We've been doing take and makes. We have, um, a thriving vestibule with people in and out every day. Our foot traffic, actually, we just did the numbers, and our foot traffic for twenty twenty was within a hundred and twenty of last year. So even though we were closed for a few weeks in the spring, we still served almost as many people as we did the year before, and our numbers for circulation of books was actually higher than last year. So our, our numbers are still tracking really well. It's just unfortunately, we would be doing substantially better if we had the ability to let people in.
Wow.
And we all hate it because we're, we're pretty socialized.
I know, it must be torture.
I feel so bad when anybody calls, I towns on them.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Nicole. We appreciate it.
I appreciate you guys letting us go.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You don't want to be here all night. I understand. No one does. Alright. Next up.
Thank you.
Um, we have our special town meeting. So we have to look at articles one through six and then thirty-one. That's a lot of articles.
Well, no, I, that, not that you have to look at, it's just the, the copy that you have in front of you that are in your packets.
It's, okay.
There were some changes that were done today that don't reflect in that copy. That, that's what that was.
Right, so I'm gonna rip out my old pages and add these in.
We just didn't want to make more copies of all those papers.
Thank you for saving trees.
Um, but just first, first things first here, Kara, we moved the special town meeting date to February twenty-two.
Yes.
Um, from our previous, um, scheduled placeholder date of February one.
Okay.
And that was primarily because of article one. Uh, we're, we're going through the, uh, quote, price qualification, or not price qualification, the RFQ process for securing an owner's project manager on the highway fire project. And we won't, the issue was that we weren't gonna get those numbers by February one special town meeting, and the whole intent was to have a number and not go to town floor with a blank check.
Okay.
So we won't know until we have negotiated a price with a selected vendor by about February ninth.
Well, do we have a ballpark for that number?
Yeah, it was, uh, forty to fifty thousand. It was like three percent of the anticipated total project cost.
So could we not? This is my concern only when I look at February twenty-second. So we're gonna, we're gonna make a bunch of people that we need to pay money to wait another thirty days because we don't have a price for our OPM, but we ballpark what the price is. So can't we just put not to exceed seventy grand to give us room so that we can pay whatever's there and move on and get other people paid that are waiting to get paid?
You're referring to old bill, the old bill articles?
Yeah, old bills and transfers.
Yeah, I, there's, they're not banging on our door. Uh, and whether if it's February first, February twenty-second, there's no concern for me here in this office right now.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Cause you're safe behind a locked door.
In my bulletproof Plexiglas. So.
I just wanted to voice that concern because, you know, there's.
Yeah, yeah.
Gonna do money somehow, or, or the, these all transfers. I thought we had some in here.
Um, it looks like transfer, 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 transfer.
So I'll, I'll explain those, but that's a legitimate concern because we have in the past had vendors, yeah, that wanted to get paid ASAP, absolutely. But right now, there's that comparatively, the concern is not as, as it was before.
Just like, we wanted to have a, have a town as a bad name for not paying our bills, right? And that's.
I hear you.
Control of paying the bills.
Articles two to six have to do, uh, two to five have to do with water department-related transfers.
Yeah.
Um, specifically two and three are old bills. Right, how are laboratories invoiced? That was not encumbered, yeah. So two and three are old bills.
Okay.
Uh, and four, uh, four and five have to do with, uh, moving funds around internally to replenish their breaks and repairs account line item. You, you'll remember that it was ninety-nine percent spent. So they're just moving monies around internally to adequately cover that, um, in case there's any other breaks and repairs between now and June thirty. So that's the water department. Highway, um, article six, um. This was a bill in particular that did make, um, our encumbrance process, except that later we found out there wasn't enough in there to encumber to pay that bill fully. So unfortunately, it didn't come up in our radar sooner, um, rather than later, but here it is today in front of us. Um, same with, uh, article seven. This is a reimbursement. So not necessarily an old bill to a vendor, but, uh, reimbursement for, um, some travel that took place during the last previous fiscal year that was never, uh, that didn't make any encumbrances.
Okay.
I, articles eight, um, nine and ten are, have to do with the fire department. We're still investigating one of these articles, um. It may be that, I think Barbara's in the impression that we did already pay one of them, but we're just looking into it and that can change.
Okay.
Those are, um, fire department-related, um, old bills that didn't make any encumbrances.
Nine is that border health thing we talked about last week.
Well, that's now article eleven in the new version. Um, and yes, those are the, uh, to, to resolve the revolving account title issue. And just make sure that that's accurate, right? What we discussed or what you guys discussed at your meeting at the time. We're renaming border health perk test and border health trash bag program.
Yeah.
To border health inspections and border health demolition fees.
Yes, that's what I had.
Article twelve has to do with Rainey's concern around, um, the bylaw having a, a minimum or maximum dollar amount of two thousand dollars. Remember that conversation? So you'll see, um, what we're deleting. That first paragraph is how it reads currently in our bylaws, and we want to replace with the next, that next paragraph you see there.
And then we start to get into all these fun zoning board ones, right?
Then we get into all the fun zoning board stuff, which I, is Mike there in the room or?
Yeah.
I can't see.
Oh, I'm hiding.
He's, he's here.
Mike has been great, I gotta tell you, um, uh, but yeah, so there we have the rest are zoning, zoning articles, which I'll, I'll let you guys to discuss, and Mike, if you want to take the floor on that front.
Okay, then. So a lot of these are really a lot of just improvements, elaboration, and maintenance on the current zoning bylaws that we have.
Okay.
So, you know, example, like, the very first one, section one, purpose. Well, the purpose that we had in there was so grand, it really didn't explain. And then when it quoted the law that gives us the purpose of that, it just said chapter forty-eight.
Okay.
There's actually more to that law. So we had a lawyer come in and draft, help us work through a lot of these draftings, and we did this last year. So, um, so basically, we worked through these, you know, we, you know, section one, we're basically expanding on the purpose of the bylaws. What, what the purpose of the bylaw is. That's article eleven. Article twelve, thirteen, fourteen and fifteen is all about non-conforming uses. Really all we're doing is removing the sections that are in there and replacing them with, again, a better description of what they are.
Okay.
And, and realigning them in order that they should go. Some of the things we took out and removed and put into different locations because they didn't belong, like saying, not performing or the launch of saying signs or whatever.
Yeah.
Can, can there be an interpretation for existing structures that the zoning board or the town is out to get somebody?
It shouldn't be. A lot of the wording is still there. It's just been moved, changed and reworded and quoted law. As we went through two lawyers for this.
Okay.
Lawyer, we have our books, our unbooks, and town council.
Okay.
So we've had two lawyers taking with us to make sure that we quoted this properly. It's really just giving us our governing statutes on how, governing, how we can manage the bylaws and what gets us and gives us authority to do certain things.
Okay.
And that's really, and that's really covered in like, uh, non-conforming uses. If you really, I mean, you have to kind of read through it, and it's a lot of boring language. But everything that we're deleting and putting in it, just like, uh, we're deleting use of structure, operations, putting in place applicability, non-conforming uses. But no, it shouldn't, nobody should be reading this and saying, oh, they're out to give me.
Good.
We're just doing structural, structural changes. Um, there are a couple of sections where we are making some real changes to the actual bylaws, and that's a little further down. Donna will speak to that more. Um, articles, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six.
It might have slightly changed, Michael.
What's that?
It might, it might have slightly changed. Um, can you just? The articles, because there were some conclusions earlier today. Could you just?
I think I have the numbers Mike is saying. I didn't have the numbers you were saying.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah. Okay, uh, well, it's administration and signs.
Yeah.
We delete, deleting sections, uh, subsections five point four and five point five.
Yeah.
We're addressing those in a whole new section, section seven, which kind of falls away.
Okay.
Um, article twenty-two, again, administration signs, we're taking, because we're deleting five, four and five, five. We have to delete five, six and five, seven and re-add them back in as a five, four and five, because we moved the numbering up. You, well, if we're deleting these two, moving them into subsection seven, a new section seven. These two that are left behind at the bottom, so they don't have a gap, we have to delete them and re-add them with new num, just to re-number them. Um, and then in article twenty-three, all we're doing is changing the name of the heading. So the heading is gonna go from planning and zoning authorized to act to administration procedures. Thinking out that, literally, we should say administrative procedures, and then that's, uh, we already have the section there on, um, for signs. We have our signs and our trailers and all that stuff. And this is where we're adding the new section area for seven. Seven, I'm sorry, I don't have my reading glasses. Yeah, twenty, that's twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. That's the new article on administration procedures. Remember it, don't, can't read that?
We just got off from one.
Yeah, sorry. I forgot my reading glasses.
Change heading from section seven. Section seven, administration procedures.
So that is what I said, right?
Are you from twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Changing the title, the heading title from.
Okay.
Planning, zoning, authorized, administration and procedures.
Yeah.
And then that follows into twenty-four, twenty-five and twenty-six. And that's where we, um, we get into the expansion on the planning board and the board of appeals. Like we, we had very little discussion on, uh, in the bylaws, talks very little about support of appeals and what we can do, and Alice has nothing on the planning board. So when people would ask, who, who, you know, they look for bylaws, I go, who do I vote for or what? This breaks out the new section so we understand what's planning board and what the board of appeals and who has authority in what areas. Because, you know, site, site plan review, special permits, things like that. Um, it doesn't change any route. The only change in the, in the planning board is we're adding, instead of just having five members, we'll have five members and an, like, uh, an associate, like, uh,
Like an alternate?
Yeah, an associate.
An associate, like, uh, uh, an alternate.
Okay.
So we're asking now, we're gonna say, we're gonna have an alternate in case someone drops out, we have someone that can step in if we don't, we don't miss a beat. Um, the only thing that, in that, uh, administration procedures, again, several of those items that we deleted earlier we moved down into this new section, the only one that really is a change here, and it's actually, I think, for the better, is an enforcement. So if somebody was not doing something right, the enforcement was that it would be to a minimum of twenty dollar fine up to fifty dollars.
Okay.
Now we just changed it because we have so much, somebody is just now with, you know, with the solar, marijuana and this, that, and we're getting into bigger, bigger things. We put a cap on it so that, to, there is no minimum. So somebody could come in front of us and say, let's say the building inspector said, Paul, sort of, there's a violation. They say, well, they didn't do this, they didn't do this on the special permit. We could look at it, go, it's so minor, there's nothing. Here, you know, here's your slap on the wrist, go ahead. Or you can give a hundred dollar fine, but there'll be a cap at three hundred. Take the more than three hundred, but you know, it's a minimum, there is no minimum. So you can say no, nothing, or you go up to three hundred.
Is there value in, I'm gonna do what I want to do and I'll just pay the three hundred dollar fine?
Sure, million, like a million dollar, solar companies don't do it for long, yeah. We do that, they do that now. They don't do what they're told. But at least now we can charge them three hundred bucks.
Per day?
Mary, question?
Yeah, um, you, you refer to the zoning board of appeals as the board of appeals. Should it not be correctly zoning board of appeals only because that's what in our bylaws?
I think he actually did that on purpose. I can't remember the.
Yeah, there was.
Why?
Both lawyers told us the same things. Something about our charter or something, or something about our charter or something. They said we had to call board of appeals.
Huh? We are not a chartered town.
I, again, I don't remember the exact terms. Two lawyers talking in my ear, and we had to, because we tried to do zoning board of appeals, and they said, no, we had to put board of appeals. Don't, I.
I don't know why either.
I don't. Yeah, yeah, I can go back and ask them.
Please.
About a year.
Only because our bylaws refer to the zoning board of appeals. We not know that.
Hey, Josh, can you ask, can you ask town council that question? Okay, Mary?
It's in more than one place.
Nope.
But that's also what we have in our current bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not, we're not changing the name. That's, we're using, we're keeping the same name. But there was, there was some reason.
I'm sure it's legit.
So, I mean, that's the most of it. I mean, if you go, if you read through them, there's, nobody should have an issue. We, we have our hearing. This really should be a non.
Okay.
We're just, we're elaborate, or it's more elaborations and expansion on the meanings of these different subsections of what they mean.
Okay.
And some things removed because it just made no sense.
Yeah.
This one is more clarification. It was actually the zoning or, or the field that, that works with this all the time. With that first section of bylaws.
Okay.
Yeah, so a lot of times now people look at it and they go, I don't want to go. You know, and, and we, again, another thing we did is, and then then obviously I want to finish up with, next section is article twen, I call it article twenty-seven. I don't know what did this for you guys. Um, we changed the title there from site plan review to site plan review with special permits. And we added a whole subsection on special permits. We didn't have anything in there. There's broken pieces of it all over the place in the bylaws. But if somebody wanted to know what they had to do for a special permit, they really didn't know. And they didn't, they didn't know who they, who they go to for what situation. So if somebody wants a sign, you know, temporary sign or for a sign up, they don't come to us for a special permit. They go to the board of appeals.
So this is really just a lot of cleanup, clarification.
There's gonna be more. You have time going.
I look forward to reading it.
We, uh.
We lie.
We actually hoped to have this done last year because we had a whole nother set of changes we needed to make this year, but, you know.
Yeah.
We'll work it, we'll probably.
I, I tried, I was reading it, and I, you know, I was like, alright, I'm gonna do my homework. I'm, this is like two weeks ago. And I got to like article twelve, and I think I was like, I'm gonna need to just have them come in and explain this to me.
I need a coffee.
We had this all set, and then town council came back with a bunch of questions and this and that. I worked on this thing all weekend again. I was like, I've had enough of this.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
By the way, Josh, we did, uh, we did find one more error, and I gotta get back in touch with you about that.
Yeah, and I want to also talk about the chart two.
We're dropping that, we're dropping that. We'll deal with that another time.
Oh, we're getting rid of it? Because I already, I added it as article thirty-one.
No, no, we're gonna address it different time. We need to have another meeting about that.
Okay, sounds good.
Um, okay, so then there's two.
What's the danger?
Oh.
Uh-oh.
If. We're deleting. And not it. So if we want to delete, are we adding it back in a separate article? Are we adding it in the same article?
No, he said you're. Yeah, he said they're adding it to seven, moving from five to.
And so there's significant risk if somebody says, oh, we accept that you delete the administration. And so there's significant risk if somebody says, oh, we accept that you delete the administrative control of signs. And then when you go to move two articles later to enact that, if people say, no, we vote that down.
This is why, remember we did, when we last went to these, we grouped them together?
Yeah.
Right.
I separated these, so you almost have to keep these sections together.
And voted as one.
Because if you do, this section can go, they're going to go up or down on these article numbers.
Right.
Because if you accept one, you got to accept them all.
Yeah, okay.
Same thing with all this, you accept the first one, you got to accept them all.
That's a good point.
So we're going to group them purposely for the moderator to.
I, I think all of these.
Offer them as a package rather than individually.
I think all of these on this first page can be grouped as one and you can say, it's just language changes.
Right.
It's not hurting anyone's feelings or going to prevent anyone from building anything under it, it doesn't really change any.
We'll just need to be clear with, with the moderator when we do this that.
Right.
Certain things.
No, well, we're going to, yeah, we're going to put together a consent agenda and that will be clear for everybody, including the moderator.
Okay.
Okay.
Now these last, I guess five it is, I missed the number here, sixteen.
That's fine, that's fine.
These last five, sixteen and seventeen, eighteen, nineteen and twenty, there are minor changes in there and those we have to, we'll have to do kind of separately.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to let Don speak to sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Yeah, sixteen, seventeen and eighteen.
Okay.
Which one is eighteen?
Eighteen is the uh. That was the deletion of A and B.
Oh, well, yeah.
Or actually B and C on my list because I.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah, so, but what this is, is uh, right now the map, this, the district map includes, uh, you know, from the bottom of the fairgrounds goes over to North Street and so we, and when it was written up, it was written up in the current zoning bylaws, which are two thousand twenty on it, which you find on the internet. Uh, it, it shows a border in black.
Mm-hmm.
And it really should go, you know, to the red.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to change, uh, you know, the wording.
The description.
Your description, yeah.
So in, in May of nineteen, was it, we did that? May of nineteen, when we changed the, the, the districts as far as, you know, residential, agricultural, we kind of dotted that expansion.
Yeah.
We had, we had big maps up, that was that, that summer, first May, I moved here.
Yeah.
We had the big map up, it showed it where it was at, and we had all the, he had the geo coordinates or whatever for each one. It was great, but then we had this, all this written, he had all this written language as far as go to this corner, go to this address, you know, blah, blah, blah. Turns out these are titles.
Yeah, I had to work out the GIS map.
So.
And a five and one, and it was really meticulous. And then it's impossible to go back.
Can you look at example on here?
Proof for yourself.
Yeah.
Really.
AK seventy.
Yeah, we found it out just by working.
Yeah.
And then there was, there's one other correction.
So this rezones these properties to what?
Uh, oh, yeah, good question, uh, from, from, uh, from residential to business.
Okay.
So we have a homeowner in here that's.
He's business.
That they're going to be.
Residential.
Their house has changed from residential to business district.
Right.
Is there any negative impact to that home?
I can't see how it could be.
So they can still sell it as a home?
Oh, yeah.
I think it would be a positive impact because they could run a business.
Could become a doctor.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Right, I'm just, I just want to make sure if I'm the property owner, I'm sitting here looking at something going like, well, I do this with my property right now, what do I win or lose?
I know.
Vote of everybody in town on my property, my individual property.
But that person that, that had, had an opportunity to go to the town meeting.
Sure.
When we passed the law, and, and when I was writing this up, I said to my wife, you know, I should call so and so. And, and then I stood up, she said, well, you can't, I said, of course I can.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because, because I just got to sit down and.
Yeah.
And do it.
Yeah, so you had the maps up and you drew it out so everybody could see where the lines are going to be, but it was in that wording descri- the.
Yeah.
Description.
Right.
And the first one is, it's supposed to be AK seventy-nine, it says AK seventy.
So we missed it by nine.
Okay.
Points.
That's fine.
Um, and then the article eight seventeen.
Seventeen, it says re- re- renumbering, uh, it's actually renumbering of, uh, you know, software source.
Okay.
You know, AK, it's two seventy-nine, I can't remember what, what it was.
Was seventy, seventy or seventy-nine. And then the other one was a.
Deletion of some of the.
What did we delete? We deleted something.
Oh, there's uh, a sign.
Article seventeen, that's the change in uh.
Districts.
Yeah, the district one.
Just maps out the Russell State Road, Maple Lane boundaries.
So it's a, it's the zoning of business section?
They should have marked it on this.
No, that's it, that's what I just, that's what this map is. That's four.
Oh, that's.
That's four and six North Street, yeah, that's it. And, and the other, the other one you were talking.
Yeah, they just got the number, when they did their initial one, they just got some of the numbers, the addresses.
It's the same thing, yeah.
Decipher the handwriting writer.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Josh, we're going to have to talk about that one.
Which one?
Uh, so, what I have in, I have it in the, in the, in the bylaws, it shows it in two locations. You just explained to me, it's actually the same district, it's just in two different locations.
Okay.
So that AK seventeen, seventy-nine reflects in article seventeen, so.
Okay.
I gotta, I gotta talk to Josh, we'll have to fix that one.
Okay.
Okay.
And with one stop, we deleted, uh, you know, some, some.
Article eighteen about some. Yeah, we're deleting disregard, in article eighteen, disregard, uh, not, uh, bullet A, that's actually not supposed to be there, it's just current bylaws starts with the B, but it's A, B, C, D.
Yeah, it's four point one, one, one point six, no display of the advertising outside of signs, so A and B are taken out.
Okay.
I know, it's hard to.
Yeah, so, your list says A, B, C, D, E.
Yeah.
In the bylaws, it's actually just the B, C, D and E, but they're labeled A, B, C, D, or A, B, C.
So it's, yeah.
We're removing the first two. So no displays and.
First three.
Standing signs are being removed.
Okay.
You're deleting the three.
In the new sign section.
So.
It's redundant.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Such occupations shall include but not be limited to.
Yeah, we didn't change that, yeah, Eric.
That's staying.
It's not changed from any of the.
Just uh.
Just moving up.
For your cases, it'd be B and C, they're being removed because they're redundant. And they're being addressed in the new articles for.
Okay.
Uh, the signs.
Okay. Got it.
Which is going to be your, in your articles nineteen and twenty.
Okay.
There's a whole new section on signs, because we deleted five point four.
Yeah.
Was the old sign section, we put it into this new section of five.
What kind of feedback did you get on the sign?
Nothing yet.
I remember a brouhaha about a year ago about a sign.
And we had, we had, we did have a hearing on these changes, um, April of twenty.
And you had a brouhaha or show up?
Yeah.
The only person that showed up were the owners of the store.
Yeah.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, they had a question about the sign and then after we did our thing, they're like, yeah, okay, fine.
Okay, alright.
So, well, again, we'll have another hearing and if this comes up again, then we'll, we'll address it, but.
Just brouhaha avoidance.
Yeah, they just like, sign six square feet instead of, you know, so they're all uniforms.
Yeah.
Uniform signs.
Yeah.
Because we like from a, from three to six, right?
Yeah, two, two and residential, six and eight, so now this would be six square feet.
So.
No, you're not.
So I think I'm outside of protocol because I have a five foot tall by two foot wide welcome sign that's on my house. That's ten square feet.
I want, I want.
Where is it at, on your house?
Yeah.
It's attached to your house?
Yeah, it's hanging on a hook on my house. With encouragement from my wife. It was a do or die situation, that's all I'm saying.
What did you tell us for?
I think he wants it down.
Looking for a little board of appeals.
You are, it's more than twenty-five feet off the road. The bylaws do kind of address you with the sign as a temporary.
Nice try, Eric.
Under the section of your carport. Under enforcement, you are, you enforce.
I know, but someone would have to bring it to the board.
I feel like your wife might be enforcing. In that situation.
Thank you.
Someone needs to complain.
Ah, damn.
That's the bulk of them, I do like some, we got a couple more quick changes we're going to make in the mission.
Okay.
Just its elimination and consolidation.
Thank you, I know it's tedious work, but it's got to be done.
I know, thank you very much, appreciate it.
It's pretty hard on the planning board, they get stuck with.
Yeah.
All those changes.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of it is just going to help alleviate the, the phone calls, the emails saying, where do I find this?
Yeah.
Because once we start getting this in, once we get these in, because the next batch, we can't do it until these have been approved and approved.
Yeah.
Once that's done, then we can add some other stuff in and change some language and move a few things, you know, start to become a little clearer so that it should eliminate phone calls to anybody, if somebody, somebody calls, what we should be saying is, go to the bylaws and they'll find that right.
Bylaws, section five, check it out.
So you guys, you guys are like this, we played a game today called bureaucracies in American Gov class where the kids had to actually flip a coin and they had to try to get through the process of building a house. And they kept getting waylaid in front of these things, you lose fifteen days because you, you know, the architect needs two weeks and you didn't go, you didn't get the right person to sign off on this. You know, they had to keep going through the bureaucracy of it. And I was like, oh man, they said, and it said, do you think this is realistic? And I was like, yes, it is. You get the sidelines the whole way. I know, we should have had them go through that. Thank you guys very much, we appreciate it.
Did you guys address the VHB?
The VHB?
Yeah, we.
Yeah. Yeah, we did that.
We were working.
Long gone. Alright, do you need us to, you don't need us to approve this tonight, Josh, do you?
No, I mean, now that we've extended, we have.
Yeah.
Time, I can have this a final version in front of you to sign.
Yeah. It sounds like it has a couple more edits. So we'll move that to maybe active for next time, John.
Look at the bureaucracy, just plowing.
I'll catch up with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Changes, Josh, we'll catch up tomorrow and make the changes.
Good job, Mike, thank you, I'll see you in the morning.
Thank you guys, have a good night. Alright, so Josh, you have an update for us on the police chief process, I see we have some.
Absolutely.
Some exciting letters to read.
So as you recall in my last update, there were eleven applicants total, five met minimum qualifications and were sent scenario questions to answer. Uh, of those five, four were invited in for preliminary interviews. Um, and of the four, two had withdrawn before their interviews took place. Uh, they had, had secured employment elsewhere, uh, in the line of police chief. And so the remaining two were brought in for the interviews, for an interview with the, uh, the review committee. Um, we have two candidates, uh, you'll see, uh, well, one of which is a candidate Tammy White, White S, Whitus. And in your packets, you'll recognize her cover letter, followed by her resume, followed by references, followed by her essay responses to the scenario question so that you are able to review all of that, and same with, um, the second candidate. And mind you, these two are in no particular order when I say first and second candidate.
Okay.
Uh, second candidate Sean Boine, um, same thing, you'll have the information in your packet. And these candidates that are going to be coming in front of you, um, you know, the committee's reviewed them both and strongly feel, feel that number one, each one, whichever one you decide to select, um, uh, you know, I think, um, is going to be a good fit. Uh, but also number two, they, they, they each can have their own, um, unique set of skills and, um, attributes that they bring, uh, to this position. Um, Tammy, uh, you know, has been, um, in law enforcement for eighteen, for over eighteen years. She's the internal candidate, she's currently one of our police officers, um, and started, um, the, the second, um, you know, had her, she started during that, remember we met jointly at Chester and the town clerk did a swearing in?
Yeah.
Um, so she's, she started when the execution of the intermunicipal agreement started. Um, so she's been with us since we've, um, established our shared service arrangement. And she was also, or has been a, a, a volunteer call firefighter, uh, for many years as well, so she brings that experience as, as well as her, you know, communities, uh, her philosophy on community policing. Um, you know, she's, you know, that, has worked with the different, um, uh, department heads in both towns around public, uh, public safety. Um, the other candidate, candidate Boine, has, uh, thirty plus years of experience. Um, chief of police, uh, he, uh, in New Melford, Connecticut from twenty-ten to twenty-eighteen. Um, uh, worked, um, as a, uh, worked for the state police. Um, is, was originally from Lee, that's where his law enforcement, um, experience started as a police officer, uh, in Lee. Um, so when you review each of these two candidates, you're going to see they're, you know, that, yeah, their, their experiences are very, um, diverse and, and, and one has much more law enforcement experience than the other. But the other candidate, Tammy, who's the up and coming here, um, has some strong, um, qualities that I think that the committee felt that, um, compete strongly um, with candidate Boine, so, you know. Yeah, I think it's, it's going to be interesting when you do the final interviews, um, after you have your discussion here, we also have to make sure that I get some dates that work and don't work for you so that both, um, the town administrator in Chester and I can start coordinating what day this final interview will take, these final interviews will take place.
Excellent, there look like really two strong, um, applications. Thank you. So that's our homework, guys.
So, well, picking the date, if we can do that tonight, um, dates that are not good for you.
So picking a date, are we going to do interviews, um, during a regular town meeting?
Preferably not, um, so you can, so you don't have the distraction of town business.
Yes.
We can do it on a.
You want to do them back to back or, remember we had this discussion with the other, we decided not to do.
Do them a day apart and move on.
But we only have two candidates.
Are we going to do this in conjunction with Chester?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
That's right, I forgot about that.
So the direct, so the directive Kathy gave me was from today and the next two weeks, what are the dates that are good or not good, and I'm going to share those dates, she's going to cross verify with, because she's also meeting with her select board tonight, sharing this information.
Okay.
Conversation, so I was going to share whether that information, we're going to select the day that works.
Okay.
And then I also going to need from you, um, obviously not tonight, but if you can get it to me sometime tomorrow or the next forty-eight hours.
Questions.
Your list of questions, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
So is there any day that's not good for any of you guys?
I know, but this is better, okay. Um, so if you want to just let us know what days work for Chester and we'll just, do you want to do circle?
You're not meeting till, if you look at your calendars and just tell, if there's like a work commitment that you have or you're, you're out of town. Or appointment, you know, then those are the days we want to stay of, stay out of, so if there's anything that's, if you're going to, if you're telling me that any day in the next two weeks after five o'clock is good for you, great, then that's what I'll respond to them with and we'll just leave it in their court, but if there's a particular day not good for you, I'd like to know.
That was a question whether or not you were considering daytime interviews or if you want all evening.
I can't do anything before three.
Right.
Um.
I'm good.
Good.
Whatever you want to do, just let me know.
Tom is good too, Tom, do you have anything in foreseeable future that's conflicting?
Tom, do you have anything coming up on your schedule that conflicts with?
No, tell me, why, I'll be.
Um, next week, Josh, this, the week of the seventeenth, I have a couple of things that might confuse, might be, yeah, just doctor's appointments for kids and whatnot.
So stay away from?
So I guess, okay, so stay away, that one's during the day, never mind. I guess it is, I think, I think I can work around it. Yeah, I think we're gonna.
Anytime after.
That would be one day I can't.
Okay, January twenty eighth?
Yeah.
Got it.
Don't forget, we have Martin Luther King in there.
Right. Well, okay, and then there's a, so anytime except for the twenty eighth and after three o'clock, right?
Yep.
Got it, perfect. Don't forget me to forward me your questions.
Come interview or live interview?
They'll be in person and it looks like, most likely it's gonna be here at Blanford, because we have the, you know, the, the, the technological means here.
Yeah, he said live here. Okay.
I'll be zooming in like this to allow more space and.
Okay.
Folks.
That works. Alright. It's only seven, I feel like it's so late.
I know. Josh. Wednesday, two days from now would not be good for me until after six. I, I'm doing interviews of my own person, developer positions, so.
So, January thirteen, that's probably gonna be no anyways, because we got a.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only restriction I have, other than that, I'm good.
Okay. Beautiful.
Alright, we got all department expense report. What do we wanna be at? Over fifty percent, right? Just over like fifty?
Fifty to fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
You could push it to sixty, depending on how people have something hit, but.
Alright, unless something shot up in the last few weeks.
I don't know, I get this external IT support thing.
Oh, let's talk about IT.
Eighty-one percent, are we tracking that?
We're good, we're on target.
This is such an internal nerd joke. Every time. This is ninety-seven, this is highway, they get that under control. Not seeing anything new.
We were figuring out about TJ's money for the cemetery.
He has a scheduled meeting with the finance committee.
Tomorrow.
Wow.
Tomorrow.
Okay.
There where he writes a personal check to the town? Why do we have to rename the garage TJ Hall?
I mean, I think that's gonna happen anyways, but. TJ, do you have a cemetery plot in town?
Yes, I do.
Where at?
And then he'll come up here up here, I even got a monument, everything, all our rickings are made, all it gets gotta do is burn me and fuck me.
A monument? I like that.
Did you say burn you and plant you?
Yeah.
Oh, so it's only with an ogre, you don't really have to be, no.
Make it as easy as possible.
You're so kind.
You're a thoughtful man.
Alright, I'm good with this. Anyone have any questions on the expense report? Alright, so the next one, two, three are things that we're gonna be reading over our next two weeks off.
No.
No.
We don't have to read?
I think you're referring to the financial management policies, which is.
And the financial policy.
Well, the first, so B and C, actually, I'm looking for direction. Has to do with the personnel policy and a conflict that has arisen. Not a conflict in a negative way, a contradiction that I'm trying to, that I don't have the power or the control to make the decision on.
Alright, so we've got.
So we wanted to start with A, with B.
Okay, so starting with B, personnel policy, section four point nine, so let's look at that. There's so much reading today. Let me look.
Yeah, you should give him this.
I know. I should. On page eight.
Yeah, some two thousand dollar heating thing I saw on there.
We skip it, we'll come back to it.
Kara, do you want me to dive in?
Okay, so we're looking at four point nine, Josh, you wanna talk about it?
We're reviewing personnel policy, section four point nine and five point seven, as it relates to vacation benefits for full-time employees that are forty hours a week and part-time employees that are less than forty hours, but more than twenty hours a week. So the, so the dilemma currently is this. It's around, we're talking about holiday, right? Four point nine, sorry, I don't even have it in front of me.
Four point nine is talking about.
The definitions of.
Definitions, yeah.
Okay, so and then five point seven is holiday, right?
Five point seven is the holidays plan.
Holidays and holiday pay.
Right. So the dilemma, the, the scenario came up, because we have a, our assistant treasurer collector who works thirty hours a week for the town of Blanford.
Karen's here with us.
So there, there, there was a, a question that came up as to, you know, because the holidays, both New Year's Day and Christmas Day fell on a Friday. The assistant treasurer collector works Monday through Thursday and had asked if whether or not you know, paid holiday still counts here, even though, you know, in her schedule, she doesn't work Fridays, and they fell on a Friday. So it was a good question and we looked into it. I connected briefly with council about it, who had, who had made a statement that although, you know, not looking at, you know, not have, having reviewed the personnel policies, that the, the town wasn't necessarily obligated to, to provide that, that benefit and, and provide a part-time employee that particular day paid holiday off, if it lands on a Friday, that's not her normally, normal, or any part-time employee work, working day schedule. When they referenced the personnel policy, I said, well, why didn't I do that to begin with? So I looked at the personnel policy. And, you know, in there it reads, where, where, where the conflict stands is, well, although it does read that, you know, if, if, if a holiday lands on a, a normal day off of an employee, that they can use that as a comp time sometime within the next two months or so. And right when I thought that that might have solved our answer, there was language in there in reference to part-time versus full-time. And how part-time employees don't have, don't get any of these, you know, that, that doesn't relate to the, the part-time employees. So we have this issue where, you know, and the, these were in practice, but and then we're, we're hitting a wall with our, with what our personnel bylaw reads. And so what I was hoping to suggest here is if we make an amendment, so it reflects accordingly to how we practice with part-time employees. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I was reading, I think I was reading that amendment, is that the one that's from Copelman?
Yeah, so you'll see a suggested amendment by, and, and again, KP, town council did make clear, yeah, we'll, we'll, you know, we've made these changes for you and you can decide how you want to, but really it's in the purview and what you guys wanna do.
Okay, so the, ah, where is it? I just saw, I swear to God, the stuff moves around in here. Okay, so the amendment becomes in the, in the, for the first paragraph underneath the bullet points, they've added regular part-time employees shall receive holiday pay equal to the hours the employee was scheduled to work on the holiday. So that is an addition to our current policy. The other addition is.
So, my question being.
I think, is that the only addition? Hold on, full-time employees, holiday employees. Yeah, I think that's the only, is that the only change, Josh? I think that's the only one I saw.
So in our current bylaws, let me see, personnel policy.
I have a hard time pulling them up side by side, I guess I could download it. No, thank you. I'm gonna try to be more tech savvy here. I'm okay, thank you, I got it. Thank you, though. I'm gonna be stubborn, except it's tiny. I can stop writing my name, never. Does that sound right, Josh, that that's the only addition?
So, the addition starts, or the, the edit starts above the title, or below the title, holidays and holiday pay. So our policy reads the following, shall be recognized as paid holidays for eligible employees, but he's suggesting that we remove eligible. And we replace it with full-time and regular part-time employees. That's number one.
No, you need to leave the word eligible.
Why do you wanna do that?
Okay, so, in the instance that, and I'm looking totally future instance, right?
Yeah.
Instance that Eric McBay is a full-time employee and the discipline of Eric McBay includes a thirty-day administrative leave where I'm not to be paid. This instruction will tell you that I have to be paid, because it says, it doesn't say eligible, it says full-time. So I can make you pay me for the holiday, because your personnel policy said you will regardless of I'm eligible for the benefit or not. Because you said, I don't have to be eligible for the pay, it says you will pay me.
Do you wanna?
I'm just saying. The kinda stupid stuff that we need to get down the road, someone's gonna mince a word on you, and you're gonna say, what made me eligible? Oh, well.
Josh, did they say why they took eligible out?
They, no, they didn't explain that part, but I, that's an interesting point, and I can run it back by him and, and, and see what he has for a response. I think all he did was just try to not really thinking about that, what Eric is talking about, just trying to define eligible when it comes to employees full, full-time versus regular part-time. But we might, okay, so I'll put a note.
But I'm not eligible for benefits, right? What if the, what if I retire from the feds and the feds say I can't take something from the state or local because I have a federal retirement, therefore I'm not eligible for the benefit, but you're saying that you're gonna force me to get paid it, right? You, you have that in there to give you leeway to moderate how important it can be handled.
Yes, John.
Also, Josh is full-time, she's part-time, what am I?
You're hourly, temporary.
You're Joanne and you're awesome.
It's defined in the bylaw, each of those hourly versus part-time versus full-time. But we're working, we're, we're talking about part-time more than twenty hours and less than forty.
So it actually adds eligible in the KP, oh no, I'm sorry, it was.
You've got a contradiction in here.
For which one?
Okay, eight point one point one.
Before we go to eight point.
Oh yeah, we're just on, we're still on this one, Tom.
I know, but I'm just showing you, you, you just said they get time and a half, and then over here it says you'll get.
Two times.
Yeah, double time.
I think the problem is more in the wording of the first paragraph there. So the change is that addition, the part, I think the part we're focusing on right now is the regular part-time employee shall receive holiday pay equal to the hours the employee was scheduled to work on the holiday. So that's what we need to, first of all, decide if we need to add.
The, the following sentence there, because in our, in our personnel policy, it's temporary and part-time employees shall not receive holiday pay. Now, if, you know, that's, that's the policy reads, although in practice, our part-time employees that are more than twenty and more than, and less than forty, we've been, you know, they, that's part of their benefits, they've been having holiday pay.
Then we need, yeah, we need to change that.
So, so that's where my conflict is, where I have, you know, it's, it's hard, I'm trying to have my governing parameters here and I, I just can't go back.
Yeah.
And, and say, okay, you've gotten holiday pay before and sorry, you can't have it anymore, thank you. You know what I mean, I just didn't want, so that's where the conflict is. But the amendment here that KP had suggested, if, if, you know, if we decide to proceed forward with, you know, part-time employees having holiday paid off, that temporary part-time employees, and then saying they're working less than, working less than twenty per hours a week shall not receive holiday pay, which won't include those part-time employees that work more than twenty, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Trying to get you to invent a new category of employee. The temporary part-time employee. Which is different from a full or regular part-time employee. So, what you're, so where's the definition of temporary?
No, I think for it was in the previous one, too.
If you go into, if, if you have the pack, the full packet personnel bylaw, and look at the table of contents.
The definition is four point one, I think it defines it.
We can make sure. Because our lawyers have already missed one item, just wanna make sure that, that pain and the miss more than one.
So what I, what I'm trying to do is, you know, see if the select board will make an amendment here where currently, part-time employees go, according to our bylaws actually, don't get paid holiday days off. That we make an amendment and reflect the policy to read that, you know, that part-time employees, just like full-time employees, that have a regular schedule with the town, that are not hourly, get paid time off for holidays.
Why?
Because that's, that's the, so we have an employee in town before these policies were created, that, that benefit has been in practice, has been given.
So, are you saying that we just have disparate treatment in the way we're currently treating our employees?
Well, we only have two employees in the town that fall into this category, that are more than twenty, less than forty.
No, we both have been getting it. He's saying that we're, that, that our practice is different than what our policy looks like.
Right.
In our policy to.
It's almost like I'm hitting a wall constantly and trying to, and I, you know, if we can resolve it so that whoever.
Anyways.
For everybody, that we don't have any conflicting information. I mean, we can, the other option is maybe grandfather's employees, but then moving forward, but I don't know what kind of precedent that will set.
So I did, so I heard, and maybe I'm just slow to the show here. I heard that we had an employee that went through the Christmas break and did not get paid the holidays, or did get paid dollars?
No, so well, that's issue number two that I wanna resolve. You're talking about an employee whose normal days, yeah, it was, it was the normal day off on that Friday, didn't get paid for those holidays.
Right. But you're saying we have employees that we do that for?
No, what I'm saying is, is that we have a scenario in which we're, in our policy, it reads, it reads that part-time employees whose normal days off lands on a holiday, that part-time employees aren't eligible for, for that, that time off.
If they aren't scheduled to work that day, therefore they're already off.
Right, exactly. So what counts, and also in our policy, it also reads that those employees whose normal days off land on a holiday can choose to, can choose to turn it into comp time. So in this, in, in, in the change that I, that I have in front of you.
That's for a full-time employee or a regular?
Well, that, that was, that's where it was vague, so this here will clarify that it, that it, that will include full-time and regular part-time employees.
So currently, it doesn't.
Oh, it's not vague.
It currently just says an employee.
Right.
View is put definition before that.
Right, so when you start reading that policy at the, you know, you kinda have this feeling that this only pertains to full-time employees, so it's just kinda vague and gray. So we thought, talking with town council, we thought that maybe, you know, we'll just define it, and that's why you see there, for regular part-time employees, if any holiday falls on the employee's normal day, if, there's that inclusion of for regular part-time employees, it defines, and it's not so vague, it's direct. The, the other option too is if the day falls on an employee's regular, normal day off, that they get. um, if the day falls on an, on an employee's regular normal day off that they get paid holiday and not comp time.
I think one of the things we should do is differentiate between part-time and permanent part-time.
Uh-huh.
You have people that work twenty hours a week for the whole year. That's your job. They're permanent part-time.
Yeah, right.
And temporary, if somebody comes in now and then works for four days and then is off, they only work when they're needed. Under twenty hours a week.
Well, I would. Okay, I, I'm with you. I just.
Well, if they're working twenty hours a week, then they are considered part-time regular employees.
Yeah, permanent.
Wouldn't you breach twenty?
We don't have temporary or permanent, just as part-time regular employees. If they're working under that, they're hourly. So you've got your full-time regular employees um, who are working forty hours a week. You've got your part-time regular employees who are working between twenty and forty, and then you've got anyone working under twenty, who is an hourly employee. Otherwise, you've got your elected in appointment, appointed or a temporary replacement.
So I think of temporary as ninety-day wonders. Well, you know, that's the, I hired a high school kid to work all summer long. They're a temporary employee. I was a temporary employee for the county when I was in Lafayette. Didn't matter how many hours I worked. According to the county, I was temporary. I don't get paid holidays. I don't get this, I don't get that. And, you know, we can work you a hundred hours a week if we want to. You're temporary. Show up or don't.
Okay, so I am in favor of the um, amendment made by KP.
Sorry Karen, Karen's there. I don't know if she wants to provide some input on that front too.
I think I've had part-time positions and full-time positions. I've had part-time positions other than this one, over twenty, and the benefits parallel the full-time position. Full-time.
Mm-hmm.
I got everything that full-time people got pro-rated.
Yeah.
And as far as the holidays concerned, if it's, weekends are scheduled days off for hard, for full timers.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that our timers should get that benefit as well. It's a scheduled day off, but it's a day off. Weekends are scheduled days off, they're days off.
Mm-hmm.
And how they're treated is if it's a holiday that falls on a weekend, it's either the day before, the day after, or come. And I, I just feel it's fair.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't think it's something that's gonna really impact the, the town in a detrimental way.
Yeah, no, I don't think it's a, a major financial concern.
Thing is, what are we gonna do with this contradiction? I say we pay them double time on the holidays, I think.
That has to work, yes.
That has to work with the union. Is that what we have for union?
No, it's, what Tom's pointing out is in the KP policy. Or either one, town council or KP, they will say the same, same thing, right? Cause KP is our town council.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to re the employee that works on a holiday gets paid time and a half.
Mm-hmm.
But then we go to set, in seconds eight point, whatever it is.
Eight point one.
Eight point one, we say, oh no, if an employee works on the holiday, they get paid double time. So we just need to clean that up.
Yeah, I think, I think that's just a minor, he probably didn't see that eight, I mean.
They weren't looking at it.
Whether if it's one or the other, the intended purpose is that it's not a regular paid day. It's that it's
Okay, so what do you guys want instead of one and a half for that?
Double time.
Okay, so then let, can we agree to accept the new KP amendment for four point, for five point seven as amended with double time instead of one and a half?
No.
Okay, wait, where's?
Not yet.
Hang on.
You can make the motion in a second.
Sure, so let's make a motion to approve the KP amendment for personnel policy five point seven. Um, with the amendment um, of one and a half to double time.
Where does?
For discussion. Okay, so Eric, what do you got?
Um, two times.
Where does it say one and a half? Sorry, dude.
It's in the second paragraph, um, second, uh, first sentence. It'll be paid the rate of one and one-half times their basic hourly rate of compensation.
So it rate of, so what should it?
Strike after rate.
Yep.
You strike one and one-half times and you replace, one and one-half and just replace that with the word two.
Two, two?
G W O, yes.
So wait, and the rate of two and a half?
Two. You strike one and one-half and replace it with the word two.
Two times, double, okay.
Or double, whatever.
Okay, so what's your issue? What's your question?
Um, my question was, what's the Juneteenth thing? Not that, not that I'm ignorant and don't know what Juneteenth is. I'm wondering what the addition is and is that a state? Is that a state holiday?
It's a state holiday, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that too.
It's a state holiday. Um, it has to do with the, the last, the day the last um, slave was abolished? I could be saying that wrong.
No, that's, it's uh, it follows with Juneteenth, follows with the Juneteenth massacre in Oklahoma.
No, I don't think it was.
That's not, it, it was considered to have prompted that, but it wasn't the official end of slavery.
The official end of slavery, that's what it is. Yeah, see if it's.
Freedom Day.
Freedom Day, but
Oh my god, you guys are killing me.
But it resulted in something far less than freedom.
No more tangents, okay.
But it got approved and accepted as a statewide holiday and the state offices are closed.
They are.
It isn't our idea. We don't know if we like it or
All right.
No, I just wanted to know where it came.
So with the uh, clarification of Juneteenth, do we have any changes to KP's amendment?
Well, I wanted to make sure that it's clear though, that um, are we providing, excuse me, paid holiday time off for part-time employees?
If we are following the amendment, then yes, we are.
Yes, okay. And also, we're, we're okay with uh, comp time being offered for employees whose days fall on a normal day off? And they have to use within the two months.
Yes, if we, if we approve the amendment, then as it is written, then yes.
Okay, what is our methodology for tracking comp time?
Well, it has to, so, well, it's a good question, but the parameters is within two months of, of, of which when that holiday took place. And we just gotta make sure the department heads are enforcing that and making sure that it's being done or you lose it.
I, this, I'm a, I'm a fan of easy. If I require you to work on a holiday, I paid you for it. Let's move on. I don't, I don't like managing comp time, carrying comp time for a year and a half or two months, or who's got it on the books.
So Eric, if you're, you're saying that if an employee's, if a holiday fell on a normal day off, so your suggestion would be to pay the employee?
Pay him.
Well, what about highway that likes to use their comp time for that Thanksgiving?
Well, they get that.
They get a floating holiday by contract. They have to make a choice.
So would taking comp time off of this affect you, the um, highway at all?
No.
No, that's a whole separate contract. That's
Either follow our policy or they follow theirs, but they only get one.
So you wanna leave it as for regular part-time employees, if any holiday falls on the employee's normal day off, the employee shall be entitled to a compen, no, to
They will be paid. Just move on.
To equal pay? To, shall be entitled to
Well, then again.
Pay equal to the number of the hours they worked, they should have worked. So take off the compensator, compensatory time, I can't say the word, compensatory. Compensatory, thank you. Time off, take that out and leave it to just getting paid.
I have a question.
Sure.
Has there been any problems with comp time off thus far? Because it's there, it's been happening.
Do you know?
I just asked the T A what is our method.
We've never had a, the holidays haven't fell, we've never had this, so the assistant treasurer collector works Monday through Thursday, and we've never had a scenario arise from a holiday falling on any employee's normal day off. Um, this is why we're talking about it. We, you know, both Christmas Day and New Year's Day fell on a Friday on it.
Yeah.
Which would be Karen's normal day off. And that's, and the question came up, and that's where the conflict is, is currently, or the
Does anyone else get comp time that we're tracking?
So, so the question is, as an employee?
It hasn't happened.
Is
This is the first time.
We did discuss this with Sarah.
Yeah.
As a department head.
Yeah.
And she's in complete agreement with the philosophy that a comp day. And, and she's also agreed with the vacation, which is another
Vacation is the other, the other thing we gotta talk about, but so
And, and excuse me, how it would work is example, I did not pay, I don't have holiday, in other words, January first, um, books is a holiday.
Yeah.
So, in a week, I take a Tuesday and I put January first holiday.
Okay.
That's, that's how simple it is.
I, I think Eric's question is, who's keeping track of, have you used it? Did you use it twice? Did you, you know?
Payroll.
Hasn't happened.
I'm sorry, Josh, I didn't hear you.
He said it hasn't happened yet.
This, this is the first time the scenarios came up. There hasn't been any use or comp time because of an employee's normal day off fell on a holiday or anything. This is the first time.
Well, I think that in the highway case, the road superintendent keeps track of their vacations, the time they've taken, so why wouldn't they have?
Their vacation's on payroll.
Well, the other thing to
Why wouldn't they have this?
It's so rare that this is gonna happen. I think, how often do holidays fall, you know?
That's why I'm against rare. Obviously, people get paid off for their holidays and move on and have to pay off.
Well, I think it's, I think giving comp time isn't gonna be that complicated because it's so rare. It's not often that it's gonna have to be tracked.
Right.
But whether if it's comp time or a holiday pay, a paid holiday, it's, it's, yeah, they're both gonna be rare instances, um, especially with only two employees.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
That's, that's right. That's another point.
So the other thing too is, you know, you don't have to offer any of this, but, you know, for, for a small town and, and a, a lot of the work that uh, these employees do, I mean, I think these
We acknowledge that.
This is a little something we can offer, um.
Eric, you
Sign, what do you want? One or the other, if you want any, um.
Hey, I'm arguing, I was
Josh, he caved. We're good.
What are we doing?
I, I do want, I do wanna recommend that we do put the word eligible back in front of full-time and regular.
I am all for that. Do it up.
Um, and we get the double pay and if a holiday falls, it's one day off.
I had to read that like eight times.
Just that sentence construction so sucks.
Yeah.
Uh, equal to the number of hours
There are my
the employee worked on the day preceding the holiday. So, I'm a sinister supervisor
No.
With a part-time employee that says, I'm supposed to work twenty, twenty hours a week, but I'm gonna unload the Thursday a full eight hours before the holiday on Friday, so that by this policy, you're gonna give me eight hours of comp time off instead of four. What do you mean?
By the same token, if I take Thursday off because I know I'm gonna have a long weekend, I don't get anything.
Why?
It's that you have to do, or the number of hours worked the day before the holiday.
Right, but if I took the hours worked before the holiday, it's four of my regular vacation time or something that counts as me working.
Well, it should, doesn't it though?
It does. It's, it's, it's an eligible paid day for which you So, yeah, I'm, I'm sort of tracking where you're going with that, man, but um, yeah, you have to be in a paid status before and after the holiday, to receive the holiday pay, whether that's sick leave, annual leave, regular pay, whatever, but I'm just I don't know.
You good?
We'll be revisiting this later, I'm sure.
You talked that through for yourself?
It'll be a different employee at a different time. Town will be revisiting this last paragraph again. Well, that's just the way personnel policy works.
Yes, it's meant to be revisited and revised, right?
Okay, so um, my motion is to retain the word eligible.
There's a motion on the floor.
I'm going to amend the motion.
Okay, I'm listening.
To place the word eligible back in front of full-time in the first sentence.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so now the motion is to um, accept the motion as amended.
We just did that.
We haven't to the
No, we are sorry. That was her original.
That was already in there.
Yeah, but nobody finished it.
Yeah, can, so we kind of went out of order here a little bit, Eric. Um, Kara had a motion on the table to accept the changes.
Eric's, yeah, Eric seconded that.
Right, so we
Right, but you made another motion, the motion, and really, you don't have to make a motion.
I'm sorry.
It's already reads eligible. You don't have to make a motion to keep it eligible. It's, you just bypass that.
Well, now we
No, cause we are voting on
On the form submitted by KP with the alteration.
Hold on.
To, to, to accept KP's, um.
Yeah, sure.
But Go ahead. I'm gonna talk to you and only you right now. Okay, so the original one, I, we were voting on the specific KP wording, and the change that was made in that original one was just changing one and a half to two. And that was seconded by Eric.
Yes, so we can talk about it.
So we discussed it, and then Eric amended that to add eligible back in.
Okay, great addition.
Yes. This is, and it is. Um. So now we're taking, uh, we're gonna go back and actually vote, so we're voting on the amendment from KP as amended.
Now you're gonna vote for the whole thing.
Yeah, that's what I mean. It's just has the changes.
That can deal with the word eligible in place and two in place of one and a half.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
There you go, done, done.
Woo!
That was exciting.
Going through through our case here.
All right. Uh, now we are looking at policy seven point six. Which I don't know if we have anything from Coleman on that.
No. We don't. This is a, let me just go to seven point six here.
Hi TJ.
Hi TJ, think about that summer program.
Sweet dreams.
So in our, in our uh, policy here, vacation um, is in reference to those who are full-time uh, that work the forty hours a week, uh, but makes no reference to um, those part-time employees that are more than twenty but less than forty. Um. So, you know, again, we, we have a, a scenario in town where we've, you know, we have a part-time employees that do get um, uh, vacation time. So it's hoping that two things, one, we put, we, we amend here and include, um, and define just like full-time, what the vacation i- is for, for part-time. Uh, the other uh, situation here, and, and I think we've already talked about this one time before, but just wanted to bring it up again. When we were first looking at these policies, you'll see the full-time employees, as they put in time, there's um, a gain in additional days, right? Like for example, uh, after five years of employment, additional one, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there was a request, um, when we were reviewing um, these policies of which where we can also include that for part-timers as well. And the board at the time uh, said no, so I just wanted to bring that up in case you wanted to revisit and see if there was a an opportunity there to, I don't know, just revisit, see if we can update it. So those are the two things I'm trying to address here, um, for this one. Um, primarily because like I said, we have part-time employees who do have the benefit of taking vacation time.
So you say, so currently have part-time employees who have the benefit of taking vacation time. What are they, um, allowed the ten days?
Yeah.
Okay, but currently we are not in the practice of doing the two days?
Well, no, so here, like for example, it, it says, full-time employees who have completed their probation and period should accrue ten days of vacation leave with pay. You know, it, it references full-time, but there's no reference here to part-time, and I just wanna make sure that it's clear that those employees that work more than twenty hours do indeed have vacation as well, and the, the rules apply.
I'm not seeing the part you just read. I see full-time employees who have been continuously employed by the town for more than
That's why it doesn't exist.
Okay.
Right, so we can say full-time Right, so we can say full-time and regular part-time employees basically would be the amendment.
I'm just moving around. So I have to see everybody.
You're trying to get closer to Eric.
Yeah.
So. You, you, so the. One way to amend this would be to just add the word full-time and regular part-time employees.
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
But if you continue down to the next paragraph, uh, Kara, you know, that's where the, the, um. Uh, additional benefits come in, like, full-time employees who have been continuously po- employed by the town for more than two full years. But less than five full years shall receive five additional days of vacation leave with pay. No reference to part-time. Um.
So we need a part-time, a PT. Um. I would like, Josh, not, I don't disagree with you.
I, I, I don't have one, a preference one way or another. I, I'm just looking for direction. That's it.
Um, can we get a reference from the, uh? Highway contract?
Yep.
Um, because I think, if I'm not mistaken, highway employees get twenty-one days.
Oh, yeah, we should probably make it consistent.
Well. I, the last time we were going through this, um, I had made note and said that their contract is much more favorable, um. If you. You know, it's up to you, you guys wanna do, but I'll.
We just wanna, I just wanna know what the reference points are, cuz I know with the union, we. Made it easier on the highway supervisor by removing. What were they? They're like personal sick days or some. We just folded them into, look, you got, you got X number of days to manage time off, manage them. We're not, we weren't, we removed the classification of making them. Special days, I need a sick chip, or we just took all that headache off of the supervisor and said, you have vacation days.
Yep. So it says here, less than five years, sixteen days, and then there's a. Pers- you know, point three zero seven days a week prorated. Then five years, but less than nine years, eighteen and a half days, greater than nine years, twenty-one days.
Okay. So. I, I think the difference is, we wanna change the cap to twenty-one days. For employees.
Okay. Mm-hmm. I agree.
Right. So. To make that consistent. I think you're looking at that discrepancy, Josh, that. The highway, highway department employees, just so people know what the reference is. They were pretty much on the same scale. They got ten days of vacation, but then they had these four sick days or four and a half. Personal, something like that, and that's what rolled into yours.
Well, the highway employees, they start off. They get sixteen days of vacation day, and our. Non-highway employees who are full-time. Start off with ten days of vacation day. So like, that's what I mean.
Where the root of that was. The root of that is that. A highway employee. Vacation that was exactly similar to town employees. But then the contract also had these like four, five, six days.
Yeah.
So we did roll those in to start and say we're done, so that we didn't have to worry about doctors' permits, all that crap. So. Are you really sick and just playing golf kind of stuff? Are you getting the flu at the end of the year so you can burn your four days?
Oh, I see. So you wanna instead of cap that twenty days, you wanna cap it at twenty-one?
Right, so that, cuz specifically we're equal.
Got it, got it. Sorry about that. Yep.
And. Full-time employees.
So, yeah, there, again, there's two things. One, that we reflect. Both full-time and regular part-time employees on the, uh. On the ten-day vacation, but also number two, if you guys wanna visit. Revisit, um, that discussion and include part-time employees when we're, we're talking about. Uh, um. The additions, the additional. Get, um. Hours gained from the time you put in. Into the town.
So.
And Karen's there. I think, I don't know if she has input or not. Kara, I can't see if her hand is going up or down or.
I, I think that benefits. Should be consistently part-time and full-time. And it should be prorated for the, for the part-time. Vacation should be vacation. Like longevity should be longevity. And it should be prorated. That, that's my opinion, and that's what, what I've always seen in the past.
Yeah. May I?
Because but of.
Okay, um. So my recommended change was that. Thinking of it from a probationary standpoint, right? Now we have employees in their first year of employment or ninety. Um, so I just think of when I did my one-year. Employment with John Deere, this is how it worked for me. Full-time employees should have been continuously employed by the town. For more than two full years. So we would want to say one full year. But less than five shall receive five additional days of vacation. That gives them fifteen days. After they've done a one-year probation. Call it a one-year probation, but that's how I did it here.
Pensioner is reflected in the paragraph before, Eric.
Pardon?
Probationary, probationary is in the paragraph before, you were saying?
It says, full-time employees who have completed their probationary period shall accrue.
Accrue ten, right? So when I started in corporate America, I was given ten. And when I reached my one-year probation. I got five more.
Oh, wow.
So I had fifteen days.
After a year.
After a year. I have a salary for deer, that's a good deal.
Oh.
But. If we change that to one, and that puts us on par. For a new employee with the highway contract. A highway folks start out a little sooner being in the. Uh. In the contracted category, but this says, hey, after you're with us for a year, you get fifteen days. So then everybody's on par.
So you wanna change that to say?
One full year, but less.
Who have them completed their probationary period of one year.
Yeah.
Shall accrue.
Just in the second paragraph, you change the word two to one.
Full-time employees who have been continuously employed by the town for more than one year. But less than five years. Shall receive five additional days. Of vacation leave with pay.
After five years, they can earn the extra day, which is the same. Yeah, which is the.
I understand.
Is the same caveat.
I guess I wasn't expecting you to be so generous.
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Just trying to make them equal.
He threw me.
That's what we used to get. When I worked there, which. Well, it was a week after a year, two weeks after two years. That was a day a year.
Yeah.
And I worked there long enough to get a month off. Which was pretty neat.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine with me.
And it's accrue, it's not prorated. We have to accrue.
Okay, so we're, so, so far, we've got two changes. We're adding. Regular part-time to the wording for all areas where it talks of employees. And we're changing the two full years to one. In that second paragraph. Is that it?
Yeah, it's. Strike there. Twenty goes to twenty-one. Yeah, we're just striking the word two, replacing it with the word one.
Yep.
And we're tapping at twenty-one days.
Okay, so that's the third change, twenty-one days. Those three changes.
Well, we. Haven't. I think we're, we need to say that. Specifically for part-time employees that it's on prorated basis.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I mean, we keep.
Do we need to be? Specific about the number, or we just say prorated?
Wait, I don't get it. Say it again, Eric.
So if I'm a part-time employee, earning vacation on a prorated basis. Because I'm part-time, not full-time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so. Part-time, twenty hours a week versus full-time, forty hours a week. In that first year of employment. They would get. Five hours. Because they work twenty-one hours a week, they get five point one days off or something like that. And.
So there's math involved.
Yeah, there's math involved, right? It's just you can't get around.
A week's vacation for a full-time was forty. A week's vacation for twenty hours.
Is twenty.
Is twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. That makes sense.
The problem is here, we're measuring days. So we're saying. Now, if you work thirty, what's the prorated number? If, if you're scheduled for thirty-four, what's the prorated number? If you're scheduled for twenty-eight, it becomes a prorated number.
Yes, payroll does.
They're math geniuses.
But we have to specify.
They love that math stuff.
Oh, Eric.
What happens if you. Work twenty hours, week one and thirty-four the next week. It all fits.
You, you just don't hire somebody like that.
No, the regular part-time, not hourly, regular schedule.
Right. They usually have regularly scheduled hours per week.
Okay. So we've got four changes we're making to seven point six.
I just wanted to clarify, Kara is. So the full-time is accrue, but part-time is prorated, right? Is that what Eric was just alluding to?
I think it's all accrue.
It's all accrued.
Left to payroll to be calculated out.
Yeah.
What I think.
It's all accrued. It's just that. Part-time is prorated.
Right, and, and payroll can do that.
Right, and the math just changes with every addition of days over.
I did talk with Sarah and Harper's has that capability.
Got it. We're not making any reference in the document.
Really said what the accrual rate was, didn't you?
Um, are we ready to vote?
I guess so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion. To amend. Um, policy, personnel policy seven point six. To include the wording. Regular part-time. Um. Anywhere where the term employee is. So you can, you can probably word that better than me, Joanne, but. Where this employee. Um. To strike.
Accrue.
Two full years. In paragraph two. Replace it with one.
One full year.
To, um. Change the cap from twenty days to twenty-one days. And to note. That regular part-time vacation is prorated. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? So close.
Full-time employees who have completed their probationary period shall be awarded ten days of vacation leave with pay. I don't want the word accrue in there.
Well, you'd have to accrue it from the time you put in.
Don't, I don't have to accrue anything. I can give you ten days of leave. Just be, you, you completed your probation period, you now have ten days.
So it should be prorated.
Get ten.
Well, this does accrue.
Yeah, I, I agree with what you're saying.
Why do we, I don't.
One year, you get ten, ten days.
Yeah, one year, you get ten days. After that, we go from there.
Then there's a cool.
So. I'm, I'm rating, and I have to do a ninety-day probation period.
Mm-hmm.
At the end of your ninety-day probation period, here's your ten days leave.
Mm-hmm.
This says accrue.
Right.
One, I have to pass probation. Then I start accruing.
Right. You're right, Eric.
So I would just rather say have, gently. I don't know, whatever, shall have ten days of vacation.
Well, I think after your probationary period, it should be prorated than accrued thereafter, no?
If you wanna do the math, I just wanna give it to him.
So Eric wants.
Your way is gonna be easier. It's easier. Just got ten days. Move on. Use them. You can get, you can, in ninety days, you can earn your ten days of vacation and quit on me.
Well, that's.
That's worst-case scenario. I paid you two weeks to leave.
Okay, so Eric's gonna make a motion. To amend the motion that's on the floor. To also include the elimination of the word accrue.
Full-time employees who have completed their probationary period shall have. Well, we gotta have something other than accrue, accrues are there, so.
No, it says all unused vacation time will be paid out.
Shortly completed. Shall.
Oh, are you talking a.
Very first period, very first sentence.
Okay, cuz it says it in the last paragraph too. You're talking accrue in the first paragraph?
Yeah. But, yeah. They don't, a crew makes a mathematical formulation of it over a year. We just wanna say shall.
Shall earn. Shall be granted.
Yep.
Okay, so, so his, so Eric is speaking for Eric. To strike the word accrue in the first paragraph. And change it to, um, be granted.
Annually. Full-time employees who have completed their probationary period shall be granted ten days of vacation leave with pay.
Not annually.
Yes.
Yes, every, every.
Annually, otherwise, I've only granted to you once.
Alright.
You're only gonna get it once anyway. You're only gonna have one probationary period if you're a good. Yeah, I mean, you just started to see how that, I mean, it's, I'm just trying to be the devil and the advocate of the wording, that someone could read it and say, okay, you passed probationary period. I gave you ten days of vacation. Next year. Well, you used up your ten days. I don't know what you're doing this year, cuz now it says you can only get five days.
Alright. Do you have that, Joanne?
I do.
Okay.
Not, not that last bit, didn't you?
Yeah, but it shall be, shall be awarded ten days of vacation leave with pay annually.
I will second that to discussion.
You just want to. Strike the word accrue in the first sentence.
I got all that through.
Be granted. Okay. Days of vacation leave with pay, com- or right there at the comma, you just wanna insert the word annually. Which may be used less, no less than two or three.
That's it.
So two.
So just adding annually is the only other thing.
Definitely.
So, any discussion?
That is my motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're gonna vote. On the whole motion.
Yes.
Any more discussion on the whole motion?
Done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're the most competitive town with benefits in this whole damn area.
We are amazing.
Eric, you just gave.
Very good.
Nice, thank you so much.
That's pretty good.
What's that?
You just gave one people that, uh, one year, work here one year, three weeks vacation.
Not free, they get fifteen days.
That's really good.
That's right. They'll wanna work here.
That's right.
That's right. That's the goal.
I can't pay you a lot when you're off, but at least you'll be off.
Josh, do you have any other?
Wait a minute, though. You gave anybody that works here. Everybody gets three weeks vacation now.
No. She did the part-time thing.
Huh?
She's been at the part-time thing.
I can't.
No, we said regular part-time, not hourly. Sorry, Joanne. I love you dearly, though.
We did it for all our full-time employees and our regular part-time employees.
Mm-hmm.[1687.54]
So you just gave all your full time and part time employees three weeks vacation?
No, only if they've been here more than a year.
Right.
I'm a nice guy.
You're a nice guy.
Write the checks, let's move on. Spirit of Joe Biden, let's all come together and just write checks. Hey, I'm there, I'm there to help you.
Alright, alright, um, Josh, do you have anything else personnel policy wise that you need?
This was good, very helpful, uh, this solves a lot of the battles I've been trying to resolve.
I really love reading policies, this, this is right up there for you.
It's like watching paint dry.
Set the governance parameters and and we execute, um, and I want to make sure it's consistent across the board and not having to, you know. Not doing anything that the select board has asked us to do, you know what I mean, so anything different than that.
Thank you.
Clarifies all that.
So next up, we're gonna look at the financial plan- planning policies that you, you said you highlighted the ones that you wanted us to make changes to.
So you remember the financial policies that we've worked on and confirmed, those were along the lines of financial operations? Um, these um new ones that we're looking to do here and include are around financial planning policies. So you see, well, with the exception to independent audit, I've, we're adding a policy on um audit, you know, making sure that we're doing consistent audits every year. And the operations policy side, but on the planning side, annual budget cycle, just kind of the parameters. And and again, this is when when there's new select board members, new finance committee members, or even, you know, in the future, you got turnover in town administration. That the practice is consistent across the board, so they can refer to these policies um and and continue the town's commitment. Around how we set our budget to um, uh, how we uh, plan around our financial reserves policy. From uh, reserve management control by the finance committee to stabilization, to overlay. Um, that's, it's, it's just more tools in our tool, in our toolbox here to to be sure that no matter who's in position. That we're, we're following the same consistent practice um every year when it comes to budget managing. Uh, and then below that, I put other policies to plan for in the future, there were, there's more, but I just figured, you know, we're just piece by piece, we're not there yet. Um, but soon in the future, as we deal with, you know, for example, this OPEP situation, when we revisit that. That we can revisit that and include in our, in our policies here. Sorry, Eric, say that again? So, you know, bringing this in in front of you and hope that, you know, we continue the same practice where we share, share it with everyone else. And make the necessary changes where we see fit and revisit later on and incorporate it into, into the uh, the manual.
So this is our homework, along with writing questions for you, for the police.
Homework and policing.
Yeah, we got two pieces of homework, um, but one is due tomorrow.
So we, like I said, I didn't make any of these up, these came from the DOR, um, you know, I'm just trying to. It's an ongoing development.
So this will be on the agenda next week, still, it'll be under old business, um, it will not be, it'll be uh, not under action yet, correct?
I would say, um, you know, the directive is yes, proceed forward, share it with departments, receive, table it. Um, uh, until we've gone through that process, then we'll revisit um, at a future select board meeting.
Alright, Eric wants to backtrack, which you know I'm gonna vote.
Well, no, so the question is, and it's like any uh, kind of change in personnel policy. What is the effective date of the changes that we just agreed to? Are they retroactive? Do we want to change them on a certain date and holiday?
I would say they would be effective today, the day we.
Or do you want to make them effective for the next, do you want to make them effective June thirtieth? Or planning for the next fiscal year? I don't care, it's just one of those statements that if we leave it up to discretion, people will interpret.
Well, seeing as the practices we've pretty much already been following, let's just make it effective today. Because as far as giving employee, we're already giving employee, part time employees um, the time off. And we're already giving them um, the first one we did on the way brings.
So.
So I don't think it's gonna affect us budget wise.
Would you like to make a motion?
I just want. Started from today, Kara, because we have, we haven't been practicing the accrual time of additional days for part time employees. Yeah.
Okay, so the first one, five point seven, so I'll make a motion to have policy, personnel policy revisions for five point seven effective today. That one's fine, right, Josh?
Once again, it's getting long here, um. Holidays, right?
Creating holiday pay and equality there.
Is that okay with you, Josh? Is that too complicated, or is that okay to be effective today?
Tell me, I think it's fine, I, I omit the opportunity for our part time employees to use. Or maybe not, maybe I'm wrong, I'm thinking of these two holidays that just recently passed, but.
Retroactive, those holidays never existed.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Make it starting today.
We don't need to confuse things.
Sarah, go and answer the application and it starts working, that's why I asked the question.
Okay, effective today.
That one's effective today, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, okay, so now Eric, when do you want to make seven point six effective?
I was, the question is, do you want to do it today? Do you want to make them effective today, or you want to make them effective the thirtieth? I don't know what the impact is, that's why I asked the question.
Is there any complication in that one as far as someone needs time to?
Employees that have been working less than five years or less than two years.
Why don't we make that one effective July first, and then that way we don't mess with.
Well, how about making the other one effective July first?
Because I don't think the other one changes, this one changes like our count of actual vacation days. If we do that today in the middle of the year, that becomes chaos for, but if we do that one July first. I think it's a lot less chaotic for pay, for the people that have to figure all that out. Correct, because if we say we're changing vacation time right now, they have to go back and change on that.
What about the, the, the holiday thing, why can't that be the last first?
I think it was, I think Josh, Josh, didn't you need the holiday one sooner than July first, so that you could have some clarification?
Like, I thought July first.
No.
Oh, going forward.
Going forward, yeah, we're not, we're not doing retro for those.
So if we do, yeah, the holiday pay going forward, you make it pay now, Martin Luther King Day is also, right?
Yeah.
If, if not, that's not.
But I was saying, I don't think that's gonna affect us, because there's nothing that's like being kept count, or there's, I don't think it should affect.
Holiday, the holiday pay, hard times already get that, even though it's not in the policy.
But we changed.
The policy to put that in.
Alright, the holiday pay, you already get that, even though it's not in the policy, we amended the policy, so you get, so it's official. That to be effective today does not.
Changes nothing.
Affect anyone, the vacation one would affect. So let's say, make a motion to make the policy section seven point six changes effective July first. Of this upcoming, so July first twenty one. Discussion, all in favor? Aye, thank you, Eric. So, always. Alright.
Now I have to go home. Nice to see everybody.
Okay, so next up, we're looking at, um, no, I feel like we've been here forever, it's only eight twenty. I had a granola bar before I came, that's it, dropped my apple somewhere on the way.
I'll review and discuss proposed FY twenty two.
So, oh wait, oh my god, and we have executive session.
Review and discuss proposed select board budget and town hall budget.
Um, so the totals are the same.
Yeah.
Payroll.
Go ahead, Kara, sorry.
That's okay, so I see that Josh has adjusted some um, budget requests for FY twenty two, however, the grand total is the same. So you shifted, it looks like you shifted some money from hardware licenses over to dues and subscriptions. And.
Kara, which one are you looking at? Are we looking at the select board budget or town offices?
Oh, I didn't even see that there's different tabs down there.
They're, they're two separate, they're two separate budgets, I just want to make sure I'm following you.
Okay, so which one am I looking at?
I don't know, that's what I was asking you, which one are you looking at?
I have one that says staffing and projected staffing, I have expense requests and projected revenue, is that not?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm asking, does yours say selectmen expense, town administrator expense?
It says selectmen expense, yeah, and town administrator.
That's, that's, that's the select board budget.
So, why don't we do this? I would like to move, so it seems that our selectmen expenses have been reduced.
The heck, man?
Oh, it's the same.
No, twenty two budget request is four hundred, two hundred and two fifty one. What I'm looking at.
What do you?
I'm looking at selectmen extends, FY twenty one budget is eight hundred, two hundred, seven fifty, FY twenty two budget is four hundred, two hundred, two fifty. So.
Four hundred, two fifty.
Four hundred from one.
Oh, I see, no, so.
Uh, short.
Eric, just, just to be clear, your select board budget's one line item, I just broke it down so you can.
Yeah.
Where it's going, so it's, so it, you know, and then, and folks.
Pay for our coffee and muffins.
That's right, so I moved, I think we should take that nine hundred dollars and put it into the uh, selectmen secretary's expense fund. And let Joanne administer it for us. I trust her more, I don't know.
So it's, it's one line item, this is just kind of a breakdown, so you can see what it's, what it's gonna be committed to more or less, um.
Okay.
Stamps, are we doing okay all the time, or do we always need to buy more?
Go ahead, Joanne, let him know.
Oh, we don't use, you know, we have a budget of two hundred for stamps.
Yeah.
And mailing, and we don't even.
Everything's email now, huh?
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah.
We don't have, we don't have these things like, you know, taxes.
Oh, so that's what he did, yeah, okay, he did, oh, I see what you did, Josh, I get it, I got it.
Yeah, you booked five hundred dollars.
You took all the money from us and you put it into your professional development.
No, no, it's, it's only one budget, that's number one, so there's no money taken from anywhere from anybody, it's all one.
Oh, wait, you.
But.
A selectman who take a nine hundred dollar hit, yeah, I hear you, brother.
Right, so there's a.
My wallet's not as fat as yours, that's what I'm saying.
So that's one thousand four twenty, um, I want to say between six and seven hundred, I gotta look it up again, that's to take the second course for the procurement class.
Great.
Um, and then there's also this other course that MMA has been offering around um, uh, fiscal management. Mostly around just how um, how to budget forecast, um, and things like that, that, um. I think the course was about nine hundred dollars or so, um, so that's, that's, that's where that, that's going. That's what you're referring to, Eric. But yeah, I don't have to take it, it's okay, I just thought it'd be a benefit, um.
I'm good with that benefit, I think that it should accrue a one year mandatory service or payback with us. Just something like that, you know.
Hey, but you know what?
There's gotta be a hook.
No, because half of the Mass Municipal Conference goes towards one selectman.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's to pay for one of, one of you guys to go to the MMA conferences, if, if we have one next year.
We should sponsor it out here.
No, it is so much more. Yet about it.
We'd have people's attention for a day.
No way.
Okay.
And like I, you know, this, this is just a projection, things happen, like for example, we budgeted this year for two, for myself and a select board member to go this year. But there's, there was no MMA conference.
Yeah.
But we had to get rid of computers that were on the, on the stage, and there was also an issue. Um, a cost that we had to for, what is it, King's Info System to come in and and do some reconciliating there with our public records. So that's where that money went, um. Like I said, when things change, you have a flexibility there in your one budget line item to commit it to other things that were unforeseen.
Uh, question, I know, I don't know if you have the answer to this, Josh, but I bet our librarian custodian does. As of January first, what's the minimum pay rate in the state of Massachusetts?
Um, it is twelve seventy five, sorry, I'm wrong, thirteen fifty, thirteen fifty.
When does it go to fifteen?
Next year.
Twenty three.
What's it go to next year?
Fourteen, it goes up in seventy five cent increment, increments.
So in twenty two, it moves to fourteen, is that correct?
Um, three fifty goes fourteen and a quarter.
So it's thirteen fifty as of January first of this year.
Right.
Fourteen and four.
Here, it's gonna go.
Okay, so you need to make an adjustment to Lori Hoppy.
Right.
Salary for twenty two.
Yep.
All the adjustments, so, and and and, and we can, we can do it to the extent you're talking about, Eric, I see where you're going. Where in our proposed budget here, it has the rate of thirteen fifty for um, for Lori. Who's currently at twelve seventy five, but yes, it did go up January, and we can even, we have enough space to make that adjustment now if we want, but. Municipalities are, there's a special exception and and, you know, when we, when we make that change. So although it took place January first.
There's also leadership in just accepting it.
I, yeah, I see where you're going, I, I agree with you, if you want me to make that change now, I, we certainly have enough flexibility in the budget to support it. Um, right now, between now and June thirty, and then instead of thirteen fifty, we can, we can reflect the fourteen.
Who heard of thirteen fifty now, in accordance with state practice?
Okay.
And move, and budget for fourteen twenty five next year, that pay ratio just comes on July first.
Yeah, we can do that, no problem.
Yeah.
I know, copying off the library at that exam, man, I'm a giving guy tonight.
Right? Okay.
So anyway, you have to make that adjustment. The town offices budget in front of you?
Um, town offices, I've got.
So, hold on, um, I make a motion.
Oh, boy.
That Lori Hoppy's pay be adjusted to the state basic pay of thirteen fifty per hour, retroactive to January first.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My second motion is to have the TA do the paperwork for that. Yeah, where does, where does our administrative assistant fall?
Well, she's, she's in the town offices budget.
Oh, here we go.
But I don't have it in front of me, do you have it in your packets?
No.
I see, yeah, I see staffing and projected staffing, um, yeah, so I see that currently the pay rate. Um, is thirty two eighty one for Josh, fifteen sixty five, Joanne, and then the proposed FY twenty is the two point five.
I'm gonna pull it up on the screen here and screen share with you guys, because I don't know if everybody has it.
What's it under, Josh?
It should have been in the packets, but I don't think it's in there.
I got it.
I did, I'm not packing it. I got packet drop.
Alright, you guys ready?
Yep, Josh is gonna share it up there.
Bob, you still with us?
Do you see this?
Yep.
Alright, that's not the right one.
You see this? Don't look at this.
Thanks for the jokes.
Just kidding. Just Josh and you.
I don't know what that is, but that was in our packets.
Oh, can you know why? That's why I was confused with the price, because I saw that price for fire and I. So I'm gonna tell you a funny story where you find it, we were on Zoom today and um. We were trying to call the school psychologist on to the meeting, it was just me and another teacher. And we, we just hit the Zoom thing that like sends a message to her computer, a little ding, and it answers, well, she, her computer had gone apparently with her son. Uh, to daycare, and so he's in kindergarten, and he answered, hello? And he zoomed us for like five, he's the cutest thing, and we just had a little conversation, he's like, I have to go back to school. So we told her, your secretary took a message. He's five, and I said to him. John Violet started taking horseback race, riding lessons, so you guys can talk horse, as soon as you see each other, and he goes, I don't know that language. Like, nay.
So, just to clarify here, so those two budgets, you looked at the, the personnel, the selectmen expense and John and Lori, you know, the staffing. So John and Lori was supposed, is, is not, yeah, no, it's, it's not supposed to be with the select board expense account. It's supposed to be town administrator and assistant town administrator and vice versa, but that's alright, we'll fix it here. Um, so here's the staffing under town offices. I mean, uh, under select board expense, sorry.
Okay.
And then here's the expense, um, which we just reviewed, so let me go back to town offices expense, and here's that.
Now you've lost me, we just wanted to be on the staffing one.
Go back to staffing, Josh.
Board of Selectmen, some guy named Josh and somebody named.
There you go, nope, the other staffing.
Yep, that's in our select board staffing level, there it is.
There you go, okay, um.
So Joanne's making more than the mandated state thirteen fifty, is that correct?
Good.
Okay, so we don't need to take any action. Okay. So we don't need to take any action there tonight.
Nope, these are uh, uh, the two point two five percent increase.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, um, now we wanna look at the ex, the other, the expense requests, that big one?
Now, my recommendation is this. I think you should change the board of selectmen pay to nine thousand dollars a year. And I'm not gonna run for office again.
Are you not gonna run?
No. You gotta roll the dice this year.
I do. Listen, this is scary year to just roll the dice down government. Um. I do think that select board, and then not because I'm in this position, but I do think that we need to keep it somewhat competitive. I don't know what other towns do. I think that it is, you know, nice to have something sort of reasonable um, as compensation. I- is that in line with other towns, Josh? The.
Um, I can show you.
Okay. I know that you have pulled that up before and sent it to us. I can't remember. Yeah.
Yeah, I needed to ask. What would you?
I know.
So these are, actually, these are positions, positions. Hang on.
And anybody who has to go through two hours of personnel discussions deserves more than a hundred bucks. That's all I'm saying.
That's seriously. It's good for your resume. You know, don't you worry about that at this point in your life, your resume.
You know what, you know what happens at this point in my life? If I apply for jobs, I get overlooked because I'm too old.
Yeah, ageism. It's a real thing. Um, what about your wife? Does she wanna run for selectman?
Oh, no, not at all. She just got promoted. She's good.
I gotta find it.
All right, it, you don't have to answer that right now, but we can just kinda keep that in mind. We, you know, we, every year we talk about giving the selectmen some sort of a bump. And every year we leave it the same.
No, every year you bring it up.
Have we brought it up?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, we've, we've got a raise this past, this year.
Then I'm fine with if it's a consistent, if we're giving a consistent raise. I don't wanna give it any more than anyone else would get, so let's just.
I would, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. I wanna make more than Steve Genwell.
You got, you and the board assessors are equal.
All right, what's the next thing we need to look at?
I think we're done, right?
Wait a minute, I'm there.
No, he needs to show us the town hall one.
Oh, town hall expenses.
Do you see my screen at all?
I see, yeah, I see Town of Blanford logo.
How much could be?
There we go.
That was the question I was gonna have.
No, that's the.
How much do we anticipate, and this goes in town hall expenses somehow, some way? Because we have the three thousand dollar grant to go to Watson Park. We don't expect Watson Park to be picking up any tab there, do we? Out of the Watson Park Fund for the library walk of, of storytelling? Okay, so do we see that there may be expenses involved that we as the town may have to? I just don't know that three thousand covers the whole thing for twenty stations. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't.
It does because Nicole's dad's building them.
Yeah.
He's doing pro bono work.
Yeah, yeah.
If it wasn't pro bono work, then we wouldn't have an issue.
Yeah.
Okay. Second, Historical Society, they know this is happening?
Yeah, she says she's had a conversation with Chips.
Do the other members of this dark world?
Chips would share that, and Mary knows, and Mary, Historical, she's just asking if Historical knows about the project that Nicole's working on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I just see this whole, it goes against the nature of Watson Park and the shrubberies and the. I'm just.
Josh, you still with us?
See it coming. See it coming.
Do you see my screen?
No, that's not the Historical Society. That's the Historical Commission.
Oh, sorry, the Commission.
Oh, yeah, that's a, that's a whole nother.
I see this coming with the Commission.
That's another beast.
The Commission's gonna be in here.
Yeah, you're right. We should, let's just let them know. Um.
Poles go in the ground.
Josh, all I see is your logo.
That's a nice colored logo, by the way. I really like that.
You see it?
I love it. It's beautiful, but it's, it's vibrant.
You don't see, you still see just the logo?
No.
Can we make that Article thirty-two?
Do you see an Excel spreadsheet or no?
Yes.
I see so tiny little numbers that I can't.
Yeah, I know, I need more binoculars.
What I see, Josh, is your comparison of towns.
So you'll see, you see Board of Selectmen Council category.
Yeah.
Blanford, we're at six thousand, six fifty currently that you guys share. Um. It's different across the board.
Did we take a big cut then this year?
No, he had sixty-five. Josh, that's, that's fine. We, we decided we were fine with that. Is there another part of the um, town hall expenses that you wanna show us? You got a fancy fade thing going on there.
There we go. It's a, it's a level, it's a level fund, uh, budget for town hall related for, you know, all these items that you see here to your left. Um, we were able to get some flexibility on um, energy costs. Um, you see here, town hall fuel. Um, so a little less than before, so we were able to move that around a little bit.
Yeah.
And around utilities, ever source from fifteen thousand, seven three four that we budgeted before and, after looking at what we spent out um, during last fiscal year, and kinda averaged out what we've been spending beginning July one to date. You know, we have it there around twelve thousand or so, but, in total, in fiscal year twenty-one, this year's budget, we've budgeted a hundred thirty-nine thousand plus. And we're kinda hovering at the same dollar amount, just slightly less. Um, I, I added, I added this cost here, the fire suppression inspection. We were paying out of the select board expense.
Yeah.
And miscellaneous, depending on what fiscal year you looked at, I figure we put it in here officially somehow under town hall miscellaneous. It made sure that it was, you know, that we identify it as a cost that we can anticipate. And same with King's Info Systems Records Management. Um, you know, they come in annually and, and do kind of a um, a, a slight, you know, perk, taking, taking, getting rid of the old, bringing in new kind of a thing. Make sure that we're adding that dollar amount in there too. We, I, I shared this dollar for this year, both water and select board expense, we split the costs uh, on that bill. Um, and I just wanna make sure that it's in here and we're not putting our select board expense out of whack. Um.
Yeah. Can we include some money somewhere for the police chief's office?
The police chief's office?
Yeah.
Why?
We're gonna get a new.
Say that again?
We're gonna get a new police chief. We're gonna get a new police chief.
Yeah.
And our last one, uh, or, or current one, Chief Delnecky is great, but uh, perhaps the next one, may not have the same design taste.
What do you want? What?
I'm just saying, perhaps the next one may want to make a change or get a different, maybe they're six foot seven and they need a different sized desk. We should, figure out that we may need to accommodate whoever the next chief is.
Now you're just throwing stuff.
And you should just put something in the budget, whether it's used or not, doesn't matter. It should be put in the budget and say.
Did you do that for?
We have.
Huh? Yeah, we just spent eight thousand dollars on carpeting.
That doesn't count.
You know, we have flexibility in our budget, um.
All right, I feel like we're dawdling. It's, it's close to nine. What else we got, Josh?
Okay.
Well, this is it. This is what I was gonna share with the finance committee as far as, you know, these obligations are concerned. And I just wanna make sure that I'm sharing it with you and that you're aware, and if you have any other questions, comments, concerns, any of this, let me know now.
Okay.
Um, so that I can uh, make sure that we're on target here.
Okay.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah, problem.
All right, I think that's about it. We have a joint uh, budget committee meeting coming up. Uh, oh.
Yeah.
This Wednesday.
We gotta recess, not to return to go to the.
I know. Um, Wednesday with school committee, I'll go. We had a Mars meeting. Um, it was a little bit, I, I don't know if I should go into detail telling you guys about it now.
Was it stressful?
It was stressful. It was, my, again, it's Montgomery and Russell. Um.
What they want.
So Montgomery Chair of the Select Board made a statement that he would refuse to sign any um, agreement. So the, the discussion is about the regional agreement, which legally we have to make, which we went over for two years and which, a year, sorry, which Montgomery and Russell did not adequately send reps, so we're not part of that discussion. So now at the end of it, he's saying he won't sign it if there's anything in there about a um, alternative assessment. Because his comment was that three years ago, the state stepped in and allowed us to have a clause, since we didn't have a new regional agreement. And the clause said that we were able to try alternative and um, versus the statutory assessment. Um, for five years. We've only tried it for three. So his saying was, if it goes, it failed one out of three, I think, I think.
Two out of three.
Two out of three, okay. So he, his statement was, he didn't want it to go in the regional agreement, 'cause then it would be permanent. The point was that it's an option. It never becomes mandatory. Uh, the alternative assessment is something that if the school committee decides to do alternative, then the school committee presents that to the towns. If the towns don't a hundred percent vote to agree with that.
It's killed. Montgomery, if you don't like it, kill it every year.
So why would you not wanna give your residents, who you are representing, the option of doing alternative? Like, why would you take that away from him, uh, from them? I just, I couldn't comprehend that. But so that was sort of a sticking point that we are going to be discussing in our second part of this month.
They don't wanna sign the agreement, they should lose their vote.
They have to sign the agreement. We have to come, we have to agree on a regional agreement with the sick, as a.
What if we kick them out?
Otherwise, that's messy. It's really messy with our, with the weight, the amount of money that we're spending and, yeah. So anyways, it was a bit, there were some things that were agreed on, but it felt frustrating for myself just because it was, felt like we were rehashing things that were discussed for a year when representation wasn't sent.
That's because they don't have a representative, so they think that it's voodoo math.
You just, you send a select board member.
And they can't stand up in front of their town and sell voodoo math, 'cause they don't know what the origin of the voodoo math was.
It was very frustrating, so we'll see what happens.
Anything that Dr. Hopson tells them, because they just don't like him.
Yep.
Aren't having the same problem with Russell.
Oh, we are having the same problem.
Yeah, because they're, they're about as contrary to anything as anybody.
That's not their idea.
It's very frustrating. Yeah, they're, they've teamed up. It's.
'Cause we have a really bad time with Montgomery and Russell with the ambush.
I bet, yeah. It's too bad, because I don't think that the people of the towns um, are really being represented fairly. Um, okay, we also need to make a motion to approve the proposal. Josh, we forgot to approve a proposal for the um.
Yeah, this didn't, yeah, well, it wasn't on your agenda. Again, this is another thing that came on my desk today that, um, but this, we have that heating issue. I'm sure you heard time and time again at the post office building. We had uh, our electrical inspector come in with folks that he works with from countywide mechanical services. Go and check out and see what the issues are, and you'll read there in the description what they've identified the issue to be. Quote, um, of which, what it would cost to resolve the problem.
Um, so we should probably move on this because it's winter. So um, motion to approve the proposal um, for work and parks and labor. Sorry, I knew that wasn't worded well, Joanne. Um, a fire department regarding failed zone dampers. Sorry, post office and fire department. In the amount of two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll be sure the finance committee gets this and, and they know it. It's just.
We're gonna go into executive, so motion.
Kara, I got some updates for you. I know, I know, but I gotta share with you that. Um. January twenty-fifth, Tammy, um, she's, she's the officer that's been involved on the domestic violence projects with the Hilltown on here. And uh, they, they, they're working with both Blanford and Chester. They wanna, she wants to come here in January twenty-fifth, at five thirty, do a photo, photo op, photo op with the each of you. Um, holding a sign with a, a message that you wanna share um, to uh, domestic violent, violence victims.
Okay.
It can be something as simple as, you know, we are here for you, or, you know, one, a simple one-word sentence of a message that you wanna share and holding in a picture, holding that sign. That'll be January twenty-fifth at five thirty. If you're okay with that, I'll let Tammy know that you're, you're in, and we'll, we'll set that up for you.
Uh, do we have to make the signs?
That's good. Make a design for me.
Grab a marker and, and you get a piece of paper and you just write your, your message. You're not doing like a big poster.
I'll go, be interpreted wrong.
Um, oh, so just a regular-sized piece of paper. We don't need poster board.
Let's get you, girl.
Right.
Maybe in our project, tri-fold, everything.
Okay.
And.
Thirty?
Five thirty is, that's your next select board meeting.
Five thirty on the twenty-fifth.
Right, so instead of six o'clock, five thirty.
Oh, don't wear sweatpants that day.
Also, I just got a message from Kathy, I guess the Chester Select Board, January twenty for the police chief interview. Uh, for six o'clock.
That's a Wednesday. What time, Josh?
It's o'clock for the first interview.
Six o'clock?
Yep, and seven o'clock for the second interview.
You wanna do them here?
Uh, I'll confirm that, but that's the date. I'll let you know.
Okay.
And the last thing, and Kara already mentioned it, but I wanna make sure it's emphasized that the Gateway Regional School District, they have their meeting on Wednesday, and that's where, you know, local officials get to participate in the budget on discussions. So if you're available and can zoom in, it's this Wednesday at seven o'clock. That's it. Thanks.
Where do we get the link?
Um.
I sent it to you an email earlier this morning, I believe, but I, if you don't have it, I can send it again.
Mary, question?
Uh, no, I just wanted to let you know that we will be mailing out on Friday the street list forms. And we're gonna enclose with that the survey for the Resilient Plan Committee along with several other enclosures.
Okay.
It will, that way, it, that survey will go in at least one hard copy to every household in town.
Thank you.
And our mailing is six hundred and fifty.
Okay. And so if they want a second copy, they can do it online or?
A second copy, they can call the town hall ahead of time and pick one up. They can do it online.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Can we have any, like, at the post office, you think, or just if there's any extra, just to kinda?
Um, I don't see why not.
Yeah, just, I mean, not, I don't know.
Post, the post office probably be the only place.
Yeah.
You could pick.
That you can go in and just grab one.
Yeah, we could put a few in the lobby at the library.
Okay. Not that anyone, oh, in the, yeah.
In the foyer, yeah.
Okay.
We can have some out by the signup sheet out there.
Oh, in our front lobby, yeah. Not that anyone really can come in there.
They can't.
Come in.
Yeah, they can't. Those doors are locked.
Call ahead.
We'd have to have something outside.
Hmm. But all the people that have badges could get one.
All the people. Josh, it wouldn't be a bad idea to look at putting something outside. This is a hoppy thing, where people can like pick up papers. So maybe, I don't know how you would get them into the bricks, but some sort of like slots, do you know what I mean, where we could put papers?
How about, uh, we talked, Josh should talk with the water guy, Gordon.
Under the awning.
Yeah, but they wouldn't, they would get moisture.
You think they would get ruined?
They could put some anchors in the work.
Maybe you can just get a couple of those little flaps of the real estate agencies, and you can have some out there and boom.
Just a thought. I don't know if, if it's easier for people to be able to pick up some paperwork and instead of having to try to get in. But hope it's just, it's just temporary.
Slot two.
Yeah.
Or down slot three.
Well, I think an idea for that's to, two things. One's a doorbell. And another one's a switch that either get Josh's desk or Joanne's desk.
Down from the door.
To punch it, and then the electronic door will.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
I think there is one in there, or there was one, wasn't there, when it was a school, maybe?
Maybe.
All right, um, I'm gonna make a motion to go into executive session, not to reconvene, pursuant to MGL, that number that's on here.
Yeah.
For discussion in respect to collective bargaining of non-union personnel. Is there a roll call vote? Kara says yes. We're going into uh, talk about uh, we're collective bargaining of non-union pers- personnel.
Salary.
So salary. All right, Tom says yes.
Yes.
Eric says yes. So we're gonna turn the recorder off. Hasta la vista.